Call the common council meeting to order.
Mr. Schrader.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallops.
Good.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Wirtch.
Here.
Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Jeffrey Dodson, pastor at First Congregational Church in Ripon. Please be with me in the spirit of prayer. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for the ways in which you watch over us and this city. I give you thanks for the privilege to serve you. I pray tonight for all those who serve our community, from our elected officials who are gathered here tonight, our city workers, and tonight I especially pray for our police and other public servants. We ask that you watch over them as they watch over us, that you provide them and their family's safety as they provide us and our families' safety. We ask that you watch over our entire community as we seek to weather this time and to go about living the good life here in Ripon. Help us to continue to make this a better community, to make this a safe community. In all this, we pray in your gracious and holy name and in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I will, at this time, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Tonight, we do have someone here for public comment. Mandy Kimes would like to come up to the lectern here. Just so you know, this is the opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issues, knowing no action will be taken tonight. All that I ask is that you keep it civil and respectful and within five minutes. However, discussion of personnel or of individual members of the council shall not be considered appropriate. I would also expect council to treat the citizen with the same respect. Please state your name and address.
Mandy Kimes, 309 Ransom Street. All right. I thought it happened at the end of the meeting, so I didn't even get time to get that nervous. But thanks for your time here tonight, for your service to this council. It's my first time ever talking at one of these things. I feel like I should get a little medal or something. So yeah, my name is Mandy, and nine years ago, I moved here in the middle of a huge blizzard. And I moved here all by myself from a community just outside of Chicago. My first impressions of Ripon were pretty lackluster compared to the hustle and bustle of where I'm from. I missed the shopping and all the food and really the beautiful diversity that I had always experienced and really valued. But then, year after year of being here in Ripon, this became my favorite and truest home. Instead of finding it sort of creepy how people just know you, you actually, I actually began to feel really deeply cared for and woven into something that is super beautiful. Now, I love running into so many people I know and just knowing the baristas and the waiters and how they know me by name. I joke around often that Canute's is like my version of Cheers. And honestly, this town has become a place that I feel proud to belong to. People often ask me why I don't yet give tours for the Chamber of Commerce, as I really do believe that Ripon has so much to offer people who visit and people who live here. Seven years ago, I began serving as a campus minister to the college students, which allowed me to meet students from all over Wisconsin, the country, and the world. I started to actively pursue helping students engage more in the community by sharing, inviting, and as I mentioned, my unsolicited tours that they would have. And I say all of this just to express my deep love and commitment to this place that we all call home. As you guys all know, our country is facing an unprecedented time, at least in my lifetime. It feels pretty unprecedented. Never have the words chaos and crisis been so accurate. Watching the murder of George Floyd, learning about the inaction for two months after the murder of Ahmaud Arbery, has only shed light on a much larger problem and history of brutality, injustice, and systemic racism against the black community going back over 400 years. Just thinking about our town's unique history, the founding of the Republican Party that was known for condemning slavery as an immoral institution, a relic of barbarism, and a monstrous injustice. I was so encouraged to read the response by our police chief and the positive way it was received. Just the comments alone show how positive our community's relationship is with our police department. And so in a time where tension and divisiveness is the norm, I think it's possible and actually really needed to respond as a community with a message of unity and hope. I think it's super important to take time to listen to our community leaders, learn from our community members, reflect on what's been happening in our world, and provide real, practical ways to respond. And those are the four components of the gathering I'm going to invite you to. We cannot remain silent about the realities of racism and discrimination in our country. And it's really important to come together in unity and celebration and commitment to all that entails making Ripon the community it is. I've been talking with leaders and influencers in our community, and I've begun to talk with our mayor and police chief. And I'm excited to continue to work together on this issue with them. And so I just want to invite all of you to this event that is hopefully taking place. Details haven't fully been confirmed, but the date is June 20th at 10:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., and the event is called Stand Together. This important conversation is not something that can happen on one day or one week, but will be an ongoing priority for all of us as we seek to make Ripon the best place it can be. I've spent a lot of time listening to my black, indigenous, people of color friends, as well as talking to more police officers than I have ever done in my life, just to gain perspective. And the truth is, in my conversations with minority members in our community, so far, there is so much to celebrate about their experiences. But there are also some problems and painful experiences, and there are things we can learn from those. And all that I've seen and heard about when it comes to our police department, I'm so encouraged and thankful to know they are here to protect and serve. The best thing we can do when really working for change is do the work in our own hearts, our homes, and our community. So I'm here to share specifically with you today because I care so much to communicate clearly from my heart with transparency the purpose of this event and the work that will surely follow. I really hope to put people at ease and really get excited together about joining in. And so more detailed information will be sent out to you in an email, as well an event on Facebook. But also feel free to reach out to me with any questions or comments anytime. Thank you for your time. Four minutes and 56 seconds.
Thank you. All right. Next order of business is to accept the informal reports from standing committees or motion to accept those.
Move to approve the committee reports.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports are accepted. Right. Next order of business is approving the common council minutes. Actually, it's a whole list on the consent calendar. There are five items. Are there any, or is there motion to approve all five?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on those?
Lud, point order number four and five, should we do it separately due to those lights?
Let's go through, yeah, let's go through three. So that's, if you can amend your motion to just one, two, and three.
Yes, sir. I'll amend it.
Four and five separately. Thank you.
And just, all right, with the second? All those in favor for approving items one, two, and three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, two, and three are approved. We'll move on to four. Number four is approval of the annual alcohol beverage license requests. Do we have any questions on those?
Move to approve pending payment of proper fees.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the alcohol beverage licenses pending payments of fees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Item number five, approving sidewalk cafe and outdoor service beer garden licenses for July 1st through June 30th of next year. There are motion to approve those licenses.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Question for Howard, actually. Any, obviously, eyes and ears on the street downtown every day. Any good, bad, or indifferent?
That's what I was just going to bring up. I have had a few people stop into my store and voice complaints that some of these sidewalk cafes are venturing out farther than the distance limit from the building, which makes it difficult for traffic to come through. So one thing we really need to do is make sure that we explain to the people that have these sidewalk cafes that they must stay within these distances to allow the five foot for pedestrians to walk on the sidewalk. Otherwise, that's the only problem I've heard.
Yeah, this is another thing I had noticed and people had brought up to me is encroachment in the sidewalk seems like it gets further and further from the buildings, and you have ADA accessibility issues different. So just kind of a friendly reminder to make sure you keep it closer to the building than further away.
Just for public's sake and mine, what is the limit to where they can come out to?
We're supposed to have five feet from the curb towards the building for pedestrian walkways.
Leaving a remaining five feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the ordinance.
Yep.
It's online. If anybody has any questions, feel free to contact Lori or myself, or we will clarify. But yes, a very good point.
Thanks, Howard.
Get out a ruler, but there needs to be a passageway through the sidewalk.
I mean, it is nice to see people sitting outside on the sidewalk in that downtown and showing a little more life in downtown, especially with businesses just reopening after being shut down for almost nine weeks. You know, a lot of people are just starting to get going. So it's a very encouraging sight to see that.
You mentioned ADA compliance. What, can you remind me, and for the public, what do we do as a city to help our businesses have resources for ADA compliance? Or is there a walkthrough that is done, or what do we do as a city to help our businesses be ADA compliant?
When we, we get involved in projects, then we must respond to it. We have not proactively chased the issue. But whenever we make new improvements of any form or kind, we address the ADA requirements. And essentially, that is the way the federal government looks at it, is if you're making changes, you must come into compliance. So I'm certain if you went around, you could find some places have some issues in that respect. But we're not, as a city currently, looking to find how people get in and out of establishments. But when they make changes, they are required to do it. Whether they're making changes to the buildings, or we're making changes to sidewalks or to streets, we make them ADA accessible.
Are there any other questions or discussion for item number five? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the sidewalk cafe and outdoor service licenses for the upcoming year. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those are approved. Next item is ordinance rescinding and recreating the chapter 2.84 municipal court ordinance. It was in your packets. There are motion to approve that ordinance.
Motion approved.
Second.
I'll second.
And just for clarification purposes, it's something we seem to see a lot. Whenever our municipal court system adds a municipality, they require the state court system, municipal state court system requires a new ordinance. And so from time to time, they add communities that use, utilize their services, and so we have the amendment.
Any questions or comments on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the ordinance rescinding and recreating the chapter 2.84 municipal court, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is the resolution for discontinuance and vacation of Aiken Street. Lori, do you want to just talk through the process that's happened so far?
This was on the last council agenda, and we still needed to file the list pendants, which has been filed. And so the, the next step is to adopt the final resolution vacating Aiken Street.
And just again, as further clarification, obviously, this was before the council. We had the public hearing, opportunity to be heard by the public. We were concerned. We were looking for the proper legal description. So a list pendants is a filing with the register of deeds that puts the world on notice that Aiken Street will be discontinued. On further research and communication with the register of deeds, it became clear that in some instances, when you vacate, the land is given back to where they found it, where they contrast it back to. In this case, it goes back to 1850, where it came off of land that was donated to the city. So I just want to clarify for everybody listening and for the concerned private citizens that we will be working with those private citizens to accomplish the same end we thought we were doing by vacating 50 feet. We then will have deeds prepared for the 25 feet to be given to the adjoining property owners. So there's one more step for the adjoining property owners to get clear title, or quitclaim clear title, to that 25-foot strip that you had been led to believe you were going to receive. They do research if they can find where it came from. It goes back from where it came from. Turns out, it came from city property. So the 50 gets vacated to the city, and then we will follow through on what's been the plan all along. 25 feet to the city, 25 feet to the neighboring properties. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution to discontinue and vacate Aiken Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Epstein.
Next item of business is the COVID-19 employment policy. Is a recommendation of staff that with the absence of public health emergency, that this policy should be rescinded. Is there a motion to act on this policy?
Make a motion we rescind.
Motion to rescind the COVID-19 employment policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank all of our employees who did follow the policy and the actions that they've taken to change and alter their lives in the last two months to adhere to some of the restrictions here for the betterment of themselves, their families, the city of Ripon, and its employees and its citizens. So just want to thank all the employees for doing what they did during this time.
Lori, even though we rescind the policy, we're still going to be highly mindful of, you know, CDC guidance on businesses reopening, business operations, all of those things, correct?
Correct. We encourage the employees to follow CDC guidelines.
Thank you.
Once this is rescinded, is there anything, if, let's say that an employee doesn't feel good or maybe think that they could be exposed to someone that might have had COVID-19, but they're not sure, is there anything that we are lessening their protections to help them feel that they can stay at home and that they are still in our good graces? You know, it's still being paid, obviously. Is, is there anything to be concerned about at that by rescinding this? Because if we rescind it, we're going back to the old, you're taking sick time, right? And, and people could feel concerned about being able to stay home if they at all had any type of doubt.
And we can always, if the situation changes, we can definitely put something like this back in place again if it looks like there's going to be an outbreak.
Well, I guess I'd like to say I think we're still under an outbreak. I, I recognize that we don't really have teeth to really, so I'm not advocating that we have a policy that we have no teeth when, when obviously things have changed at the state. But I want to make sure our employees feel supported, that if they feel it, they might be exposed. I mean, there's still active cases in our county.
And I think in terms of this policy, many of the employees involved were essential workers. And so the policy was a little bit different in terms of how they had to address it in any event. But at the end of the day, I am confident, and again, I've been part of the city for quite some time, that we do address the needs of our employees on a case-by-case basis when ne, when necessary. And I'm certain, given the COVID situation, we would bring that forward if we didn't feel that we could accommodate a situation where a COVID infection became apparent.
And one last thing I'll just bring up. The reason why I bring it up is because it says an employee will be granted paid leave of absences under the following circumstances. And that's if they exhibit a flu-like symptom or someone in their household has a flu-like symptoms. If we already do that, and we're already confident we do that, why did we need it in this special policy?
Again, it's within the context of a separate COVID determination because of the public emergency. That's what gave the city, the mayor, and the common council the right to go forward. I guess what I'm pro offering is we're not unmindful of the fact that there still may be COVID in our community. And if that were to occur, the city administrator would bring that forward to the common council if they felt that our policies that we have in place for city employees was insufficient. That's, I'm just firmly in that camp.
Should we make any type of statement to our employees that say that we support you, if, you know, that we will? You know.
I think you just, I think you just did. I think you just did. I think.
I don't know if others support that.
Yeah.
But, but I do.
Yeah. And that's important to express. I, I don't think we have authority to continue it because there's no longer the determination by the state that we are certain, unless we can do separate fact-finding to show that there is COVID outbreak in our community.
Our, our city workers, obviously, I hope they know that if they are not comfortable with not working without a mask or taking proper precautions to protect themselves from such a virus, I would hope, as a city and as we employ them, that they know that they can still install their safety measures while at work. And I'm pretty positive that they would know that right off the top. But if they don't, well, that's what we're sitting here about, letting them know that they can.
It's also important to understand that there's still federal employment law, the CARES Act, and, and, and there's, there are acronyms all over the place that is still applicable. So if an individual, you know, contracts, has to take care of people that, that, in their family that may have contracted, there's, there's applicable federal law and employment law that pertains to that, pertains to family medical leave, pertains to paid leave, pertains to all of those things. That has not been replaced as of yet. So the city is still under those particular mandates until further notice, as is any business or organization.
Good point.
In a sense, Lud, our response is to remove this due to the Supreme Court decision back May 14, 13.
We'd have to make separate finding.
Correct. We'd have to make our own.
Have to make separate finding. As to the community, because it's a state health issue. Federal government has certain mandates, rules that they put in place, and I think Al's correct. There may be many provisions of the family medical leave and related provisions that are going to apply if someone contracts COVID. But for the city of Ripon to maintain this policy after the state of Wisconsin has lifted the restrictions, we'd have to make separate findings as a community.
I was also going to say that long-term disability, short-term disability, I mean, parts of our employment, FMLA, I mean, there's still all those rules.
But it's a very good point. It's a point, a good point to raise, that they don't feel like we're abandoning them. We are not.
Correct. It was there before this.
But there are extra provisions now related directly to COVID-19.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to rescind the COVID-19 employment policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is rescinded. All right. Onto our discussion items. First item is the proration of liquor license fees.
Is that legal?
Yes. Yes.
Anyone want to start a discussion on this?
I'm assuming this would only apply for businesses that had to close. For the, so like webstores and gas stations that were open, a proration wouldn't apply to them, correct?
It is entirely up to this council. What is the outcome of this discussion?
Okay.
And I think we're talking, and we've got the interested persons come forward. I think, I think we're talking more specifically about open, open.
If you could state your name and address?
My name is Paul Salswiddell, owner of Tall Paul's, and I live in Markazan.
Okay. Go ahead and.
All right. So the reason we're asking for the, either a proration or some relief over, and I'm actually the area, our local area president of our tavern league. So the reason we're asking, our industry got hit hard by COVID. I was personally closed down for about two months. About over, well over 100 municipalities have done different forms of relief. Brandon did about a 30% reduction. Markazan did a 50% reduction, mark, city of Markazan. And actually, the township of Green Lake actually waived 100%. So I guess on behalf of me and my other barkeeps and restaurants in the city of Ripon, we're just asking that you would consider some form of relief from our liquor license fees.
What amount or percentage were you looking?
I think personally, 50% is kind of in the middle there. I think that kind of helps.
Of the full year fee?
Of the full year fee. That, that's what we'd ask. I'm asking on behalf of the rest of our group. But any form would be appreciative, of course. So some, some people talk about prorating maybe the two months that we were locked down, right? So for two months, so like Carol from Past Times is here. I was locked down for two months. Carol, she was open, but very limited occupancy. So, so a lot of those places still were struggling, trying to pay the bill. So it'd be a nice form of relief for, you know, for the next year. So I would ask for half for the next full year, but even if you consider two months of where we were closed down, we'd appreciate it. But, but like I said, that was three examples, but there's hundreds of examples. Like I said, I got a list from the tavern league that long. the tavern league, that long municipalities that have done different forms of it.
Jimmy, you have a question?
Paul, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You've been open about a month. Let's just call it a month. May to June, your sales compared to May to June last year?
We're at about 50% of that. A lot of it had to do with college. Obviously, we get a lot of college, but now college would be gone by Mother's Day usually. The biggest problem I had personally was we lost the really best time, March, April, May, you know, colleges kind of getting a little more relaxed right there.
Final four.
You know, all those kinds of things. And you see that, but every place is unique. You know, Carol's place is a little different than mine. I can't speak for her, you know, but we definitely seen it easing in. Like for Carol, I can guarantee her, because I know plenty of other restaurants, and I have other ones that I lease, and a lot of the older clientele are a little scared of coming in yet, which is totally understandable. We want everybody safe, too. We're just happy we're open. You know, we were worried, I didn't know how long this was going to take, you know, so. But I don't see it happening again, but never say never, because I never thought this was going to happen the first time, so. So I'm careful to say that, but I, I know over the other properties I have, they've all been maybe 50%, but they're coming back, you know, slowly. But everyone's a little different, and we, the biggest thing that hampers us is we don't do events and things because you want to be careful, right? So, we're not going to do any events right now. We're going to just try to status quo and keep everybody healthy, so.
Essentially, for point of clarification, we're looking at Class B with the premises, Anne, is what we're talking about around, which is those, you're talking about anyone, everyone.
Well, we're asking Class B combinations, so I'd be asking for the restaurants and for the taverns that have a combination beer.
Restaurant taverns.
So it's a combination beer liquor license, 600 bucks a beer, so we get 300. I'm not looking for relief from the other fees, you know, we have the other machine fees and stuff like that. I would just say our normal thing is 600 bucks. If you reduced it by 300 and did 300 for everybody, I think that'd be a very nice thing to be pro-business in this town, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Again, for debate purposes, Anne, are you, we discussed at administrative level, he just clarified that it's for serving, for restaurants and for bars. Is that what the council is aiming to discuss this evening? I just want to make that clear. Your thing crossed the board. For gas stations, the whole nine yards. Okay, that would, administratively, you think that would be easier?
I'm saying, how, how do we know that their business wasn't affected also?
Okay, so you're just looking at it from a global perspective?
People stay home.
Okay, yes.
And, and once again, I can speak from back here. When you talk gas stations, that's a Class A liquor license, so it's different, you know, that's carryout. We're, I'm just talking for the intimacy part. Our business is affected definitely, but I think most of us know that the gas stations and properties like that, and like the grocery store, I mean, they all did real well in this, and that's fine, but-
Yeah, they had more opportunity.
So I think if you kept it a Class B, I don't think you'd have an argument of why they get naked.
Thank you. Anne?
The Class B doesn't encompass Canute, doesn't do China One, doesn't do Mugs, doesn't do the American Legion. So, that's why I'm saying you have to look at everybody.
So you, so you're, and again, I think what we're doing is a good job of narrowing the issue. Anyone who ended up closed because they couldn't service, drink in the establishment as opposed to a grocery store or a liquor store. Go ahead.
What about Patina V, they have a Class A intoxicating liquor, were they affected? People could go into their store.
Okay.
So that's why I say you have to look at as they think.
Okay, and that's it. It's up to the common council. I'm just trying to narrow it. It's not our decision, it's their decision.
Would we be able to, oh, would we be able to- Would we be able to request in, in going through to prorate the license request sales numbers in comparison to the year prior?
You could. I don't know that you want to go that far.
Okay.
I think it's either do it or don't do it.
Okay.
And I'm familiar with some of the communities that were cited and others, and I think it's, it's more a gesture than anything.
Okay.
Rather than trying to tie it, and if you're comfortable to include all liquor licenses, I don't care either, depending on what credit you intend to, to give.
Anne, do you have a, if we prorate all the liquor and alcohol licenses for the year, or just that two-month period, did you have a cost, what that would cost the city?
Um, all I came up with was the chart that was included, like if you look at what you approved for renews, you could sort of get an idea. I didn't come up with a grand total, because I wasn't sure of what tax point it was.
But if we were to, if we were to do this, what would it require then? Would we require a resolution or?
Motion.
Simply a motion?
Simply a motion.
Would we refund the money, or then would we just amend?
As it turned out, I was hopeful that in considering this, we would be in a position to just say you don't owe as much, depending on the council. Laurie informed me prior to the meeting that all but three have paid for the following year. So we're not going backwards per se, we're looking at the one that came in and will refund for the year a certain number if you decide to go that way. It appears now as a refund, but for three. Three would have the opportunity to write a smaller check if you choose to do this.
Laurie, is there a change to the list that we just approved versus what was established last year?
I don't, was there a new one?
There are a few, yeah, a whole other ones. Compared to this list.
Our, our new list is short.
Can we just go with the Class B and then the restaurants that closed? I don't know if Anne can narrow down the, just the restaurants that were closed. Like she said, Canute and-
She can, she can.
Instead of like Webster's, they were open, and I don't think that's, they lost anything.
That's certainly up to you.
And then if there's any-
Anne?
Tall Paul's is in the restaurant, but there's still a Class B establishment.
No, that's what he meant.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
He was including that.
The Class Bs along with the restaurants that closed. And if somebody's in, you know, opposition, they, could they appeal? Like, I'll just use Webster's, could they appeal?
They could come forward.
Or come forward.
It's, it's within your purview. It's, it's simply a, a one-time item here related to COVID. So it'll be a COVID motion.
I would say any motion we have should mention the word COVID, correct?
COVID or whatever name you want to give it, that establishments were forced to close is the concept.
So the Class B and C are the only ones that are really hurt by the COVID, right? With probably the exception of Patina V.
Right. We could add Patina V to the motion if you wanted to. I'm not aware of any others that have that type of establishment.
As a downtown business owner that also had to close for nine weeks, I really feel the pain of these businesses. It hit us all really hard. I feel any relief we can give to them to, to help out shows good faith by the city. I know some may complain that it's geared towards just one type of business, but they're the ones that are paying a, a license fee to, to operate. So if we can turn around and do some small part, my thought was, you know, they were closed for eight to nine weeks, the majority of them, with nothing. And that's basically a quarter of their yearly fee. If we credit them for that quarter, I think that's showing some faith there and doing it that way.
I may. I think if we do some kind of relief like this, it would actually show the backbone of Ripon and how we do support our local businesses, which is very important to our community. To further that a little bit, Howard, I would almost say that instead of a quarter, you would almost want to go at least four months, four months relief, which would break down, let's say it's 600 bucks, that's for the whole year, that'd be 50 bucks a month. So you're talking $200. Is that $200 going to be enough to help out those businesses? I sure hope so. I really do, because I don't want to see them closing doors.
It's more than nothing.
You know what I mean?
I mean, I can name several businesses uptown that were on the verge of closing, you know, and we're not doing anything for them.
And that, that's what I want to bring to light, because I want to make sure that, that the businesses understand we are behind them 100%, and we always want them to be successful. So I think we got to figure out a, a good amount to help give them relief to get through this mess, because it's been hard on, on the small businesses and even on the medium businesses. Whereas businesses like Webster's may have been hit, but not as hard as the small businesses have. Unfortunately, I've seen across the news lots of small businesses that have been open for years. You're talking 20, 30 years that had to shut their doors because of this. So, and I do have to agree that any type of commitment we make to alleviate the businesses and their, their hardships right now, whether it be a couple hundred bucks, it shows them that we do have the support, so.
And it shows the outside communities that we're not a bad place.
Yeah.
We take care of our own.
I agree with 12 weeks. Taking into considering, consideration reopening doesn't just mean all of a sudden they're going to be slammed, and they're taking, you know, I mean, you go out to eat somewhere and it's a totally different, you know, you have to ask for packets of salt and pepper, you know. So, so in, in them adjusting to it, but also to the, the community trust of open environments, I think, you know, it's not just business as usual right away. So I think factoring that in along with the nine or so weeks that they were closed.
You know, and, and I certainly am sympathetic to all small businesses, but I, you're setting a precedent to one facet, one industry of small business in our community. How he's, how he's got an athletic apparel store and other things. You know, Cliff's Tire and Battery does, you know, auto repairs. Their business was down. Well, you know, we, we do this for, for, you know, the people with Class B and C liquor licenses. What, what are we going to do then for everybody else? And to pick and choose, we can't give tax rebates, can we? I think so. Yeah, again, highly sympathetic.
We don't know.
But there's a lot of other businesses in our community that were closed, and what are we do, what are we going to be able to do for them? I, I'm not comfortable with it. No, no disrespect to anyone.
And just to that point, not only the businesses that were closed, but the ones that were allowed to stay open had a severe loss of business as well.
Exactly.
Are there any other types of businesses that are required to purchase a specific license annually to run their operations?
Anne, do you want to answer that one?
The city of Ripon has a business license.
Okay. So essentially, your liquor license would be, whatever class it is, would be the only type of license that a business needs to pay for every year to operate in the capacity that their business is meant to operate in.
Eileen?
I, I think, I think to that point, and I like that Mr. Schreider brings up the point that we have to always be mindful of setting a precedence. And I also know that we're Ripon, we, we have, we've, our history has shown that we do great creative things, and perhaps we want to be talking about in the future about how we can have low-interest business loans or support, or, you know, something creative to help our local. I think to the point right now is that I do not believe we are setting a precedent for all businesses or cherry picking, because to Mr. Hanson's point, we as a city have charged something, the license fee, that did not allow them to collect on it. So we're not necessarily, in my mind, offering aid. We are saying that we are not going to charge you something that we did not allow you, that you could not collect on.
I'll have to second that. I don't believe that it's, it's really handpicking who we're helping, who we're alleviating. The businesses that are with the Class B and C liquor licenses, they're paying a fund every year to, to retain those licenses from us. And for those couple months that they were not allowed to be opened, much like all the other businesses who were considered and deemed non-essential, they were hurt just as bad, too. And I think just to alleviate just the, the licensure, I do think that that would be a, a showing of good graces from us, from the city, and showing them that we do have their backs. And if something like this were to happen, I would hope that we as a committee would do our best to ensure that the small businesses who don't have the small licenses, like that are needed for the liquor licenses, that we would have their backs as well. And, but I think this would be just a wise gesture right now to let them know that we do have your back. Even though, even though some small businesses here don't need the licensure, we have your back as well. But right now, we're trying to get some alleviation to a lot of these people who, it's their livelihood. And it's not to say anything less about any other business, because that's their livelihood, too. But we got to start figuring out something.
Is there any other new discussion on this, or does anyone want to make a motion?
That's a discussion item, Your Honor, so we don't have to move on.
You don't have to. I, obviously, historically, we've allowed motions to occur in similar type discussions, just for clarification. We haven't been hard and fast and say you have to send it off to another agenda. But that's up to the body. But good point. It doesn't call out, you can move on without a motion.
Correct.
But if you get a motion in this type of an issue, it can be argued-
Can we, can we just until the next meeting, if there is not a timeframe right now?
You certainly can. That's a, that's a motion as well.
No, the fees do.
Well, it turns out everybody paid but three, correct, Laurie? Anne?
June 15th.
They're due by, we can't make a business pay more than 15 days prior to the expiration of their license.
Okay.
So June 15th, we could start going to the three businesses and say, hey, please remit your funds, and then when House decides, if they decide to refund, we could just refund.
Very good.
Is there any way we could extend that out for them until our next discussion? Okay. That's what I asked.
Eileen?
Part of me wonders if we're trying to make a statement that we unequivocally support our, our businesses to put this off, whereas I don't know what more information we would gather necessarily. That seems, I don't know if that is making a strong statement anymore from, from this council. And just under a point of clarity, so the businesses that were mentioned from our city clerk that would have been excluded from the Class B, if we say Class B and C, are we now saying that that does include Mugs, Canute, the American Legion, and China One?
Yes.
So that's a, okay.
You'd have the American Legion just has beer, they don't have wine, so you'd have to, if you want, say Class B, for that beverage, Class B intoxicating liquor and Class C wine, if that's what the council wants.
Thank you. Too many letters.
My point isn't to dally on it, but it's more along the lines for those clarifications to make sure we have the right information in front of us. So when we do make that decision, the precedent we do set is correct, and it is right. And I can give better thought of 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, looking at six months. Some of the businesses did apply for PPP loans. You know, some of those establishments did apply for that, and that license may have been part of their application, so they may not be out those funds.
Would you like to make a motion to table?
I wouldn't say table. You don't have to table it, because then tabling, we'd have to make a motion to bring it back.
Bring it off the table. Just indicate that move, it be discussed at the next regular meeting, which is, so we can just be- so we can just be specific, put it on the agenda.
I want to do something to help, for point of clarification, though. I want to do something to help those businesses that we can help, because the city's had our hands tied quite a bit with the COVID, because we don't have a lot of resources to help that way. I just want to get to, I think, Al's point, fair, equitable, the precedent, and make sure we do it right and correct for all those businesses.
Next meeting date?
June 22nd.
That would be a motion if that is the will of the body. To set it.
Would entertain a motion to postpone this discussion to the June 22nd meeting?
Second.
I need someone to make the motion.
I can't make it.
I'll motion that.
And, so second, so it has been moved and seconded to postpone this discussion to the June 22nd meeting? Any discussion on that motion?
Could, we have Anne, please come back with
The list.
The exact list of what it includes.
And the dollars involved, yes.
Yeah.
And possibly some options as to the 60-day full quarter timeframes?
Look at the numbers.
And what, what was this about June 15th? There's something due? Is there anything that is due for those businesses that they, it would help for us to make a statement now versus at June 22nd?
Only three of them left that were unpaid. Only three.
So there are three businesses that are going to try to scramble to find money by us not making a decision tonight?
Not necessarily. They could just be delaying. That happens every year with certain businesses.
And that would be okay for them? There's not penalties for them?
No.
Are there any further discussion on the motion to delay this discussion till the next meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor of postponing this discussion to the June 22nd meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discuss and set the next meeting. All right, next item is citizens walking in the streets when sidewalks are available. Uh, let's see, this was requested by Ben Morrison. Would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. Good evening, folks. Thank you guys for all listening to me today. Council, thanks for letting me speak with you. So three years ago, I moved up to Ripon. It's an amazing little city. I love it. I come from Port Washington, right? In Port Washington, that's another one of those cities that's just, it's family orientated. It's amazing. And we're all about keeping our people safe there. We have the community mentality where, you know, I remember being a kid, you know, you never wanted to screw around outside because you're always afraid of your neighbor's mom. And then when you got home, you know, oh man, then my mom's going to hear about it too. That's the kind of neighborhood we were brought up in. So we always kept each other safe. And that's the mentality I wanted to bring up here, where we're always keeping each other safe. I think I can say this for myself. I hope the majority of you have what I have. But right here, I'm holding in my hand a cell phone. When I'm driving, I can't tell you how many times I've noticed people texting and driving, okay? I know it is a state law. I know it is inattentive driving, and I know it's against the law to be texting and driving. But that doesn't stop people from texting and driving. Now, my issue is, since living up here in Ripon, I have noticed that on numerous, and I mean numerous, almost daily, occurrences where I see citizens walking with their spouses or their children in their carriages or, or even their dogs, and they're walking in the middle of the road when the sidewalks are available. And I can't tell you how many times I've almost actually hit a couple people. And I'm a very attentive driver. I don't text and drive for a reason, because the thought of hitting somebody always scares me. But I'm not everybody. And texting and driving is a serious issue, and what happens in our city when we don't, when we as a council don't look at something in a perspective of safety as far as keeping our citizens in a good, in good health and good standing. It's a dangerous, it's a dangerous thing to do. I mean, we have sidewalks readily available for a reason. And I understand we have cities and, we have streets in the city where they don't have sidewalks. And a lot of people are good at walking down the, right next to the curbs. But I just, I've had this fear since, since living here that we're going to see somebody hurt one day. And I, I really don't want to go live through that. But I don't want to be on the council and not be able to sit there every night and say, we didn't try our best to ensure that our citizens are safe. So, and that's an issue with me. And I'd like to see, to discuss with the council here. And if the people would like to come on up and talk about it too, I, I hope you would love to. But I think it's a severe issue, and we should at least look at it in a, in a way of, you know, community first and keeping our kids safe. So, that's what I got.
What are you asking us to do? Make a law against it? Because
I'm not asking.
I'm just asking.
I'm not asking.
Let me finish. I'm not done.
On the books, I think we already have a lot of laws sitting in here.
I wasn't done with my question. I, I guess the point is, what would you like us to do? You'd like us to make a law, an ordinance, LUD to you? Can a person legally walk in the street?
Yes. Under State Statute 34628, pedestrians are to walk on the left side of highway and drivers to yield. Any pedestrian traveling along and upon a highway other than upon a sidewalk, we're talking about in the roadway, shall travel on and along the left side of the highway. Upon meeting, a vehicle shall practical, practical move to the extreme outer limit of the travel portion of the highway. So they are allowed to walk on the street. In other words, you can't pass an ordinance and say, you can't be on the street.
Are you talking on the middle of the road, or are you talking on the side of the road?
I'm talking on the roadway. And yes, there is a duty to move over to the nearest portion to the curb, okay? So the, the point of the story is attempting to adopt an ordinance to say, no walking in the streets, which is, from an enforcement point of view, interesting, but at least would give a black and white answer to when they address somebody complaining that somebody was walking in the street, would not be legal. You can't prohibit people from walking in the street. It's the, is the bottom line. You follow? Now, can you suggest and cajole and police to the point where you say, be careful about how you walk in the roadway, because you shouldn't walk in the middle of the road? Yes. I mean, that, that's where Jim's driving here is, yes, I think it's an important point you make. But can we pass an ordinance to say, no pedestrians in the street? I think that would fail. And I looked for other communities. I could not find one, even with your suggestion, which is a great one, which is, if there's a sidewalk, get up on the sidewalk. That's a great idea. The problem is, for some, if you're walking to, there are many narrow sidewalks in our city where you literally cannot walk side by side on the sidewalk. I know that because I walk in the city, or limp in the city, limp around. And you can't do it safely, and you catch an edge and I roll my ankle. So at times, I find myself having to go out in the roadway to be able to keep up with my wife, who walks faster than me.
I appreciate, I echo your sentiment. I know where that, the PSA part of it, 100% behind you. I'm big in the PSAs here. Everybody knows that. For years, I've, I've been PSA. So that I could completely agree with. It's just a matter of where we could have teeth, just like a lot of the next issues, we're going to be talking about. Where could we have teeth and where could we have skin in that game besides, please try to be careful, you know, those kinds of things? So I'm, I'm all for that kind of communication. I just don't know what we can do vigilantly.
I agree with, with a PSA, making it known, especially given that in the past few months, people have been walking while social distancing. So there's now a habit of somebody getting the sidewalk, somebody getting the curb, and then, you know, Suzie joins you and, and she's pushed out. I've seen that a lot, especially with, with older people that are out walking. And so I think, you know, once that just becomes routine, you know, so possibly a reminder as we're getting into the warm months and, you know, with things starting to open back up, I don't see that being, you know, I see that being truly a reminder as opposed to, hey, all you guys are walking in the street, be smart. So.
Yeah, and, and to Ben's point, let me just highlight, I agree, under state law, you can't prohibit highway traffic. And, you know, we've seen that obviously with the protest. The highway has to be able to move traffic, so you can't be in the middle of the road standing. But if you're moving along and you move to the, the proper side of the roadway, there's nothing they can be cited with. They can be cited if they try to block traffic.
Any further discussion on this item? No? All right, moving on to the Hospory Stable Roof Repair. I'll turn to John.
This has come up a couple of times from people I know. It came up a couple of months ago at our Historic Preservation Meeting. It's a city-owned building, so I went out and got an estimate from a local contractor, Thorpe Exteriors, to repair the one section of metal roof. And it's kind of, it's a handwritten, everybody has a copy of it. It's a handwritten and it's kind of, I'll just say sloppy. But the way I understand it, it is replacing roof fascia, or excuse me, yes, roof boards, fascia board, which is up the gable, patch, standing seam, metal roof, the one section, time and material not to exceed $2,000. It includes all labor, material, and that last word, I believe, is equipment. I don't know it for sure. It's just not to exceed $2,000. We can get the roof watertight again, so it doesn't cause any rotting. And that's where we stand. Historic Preservation is in favor of fixing it.
Mike, you did some investigating on that? Did you do some investigating on that repair?
Well, yeah, you know, I just looked at it as just putting a piece of tin on and not completely adding all the fascia and that stuff on. That's, that's how I looked at it. Find a piece of tin, frable, something from maybe Modern Pole or something like that, and screw that on there to keep it relatively watertight. So we can go either way.
Does Public Works have the equipment to do that job?
We have a lift. We can get up there, yeah.
It'd be like $100 in material, is it?
That's what I'm thinking.
Plus.
Yeah. With a, yeah.
Use a city lift and.
Jim? Is there a hole? Is there a piece missing from the wind? What, what's the damage from, or what, what's the damage?
It's, it's a piece of the metal, the entire length of the roof on the front corner of it, the front side of it. I'm sure the wind took it or the snow took it off. It looks from the ground that some of the boards are rotted, so I don't know how well the screws are going to hold if, if the boards aren't replaced with a new piece of tin put on. But that would be determined once somebody got up there to look at it. I am perfectly fine with anything to cover that, to keep it watertight for now, because obviously it's either a tear down or somebody's going to buy it and restore it. So it doesn't have to match right now perfectly anyways. So I'd be fine with DPW doing it ASAP, you know, because we're in the rainy season now. So the more water that gets in there would affect it down the road.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, say if we're going to make a motion.
So move.
Second.
Is the motion to have Department of
Motion to have Public Works fix the, the roof and a cost not to exceed $100 plus labor.
And you seconded?
I'm second. I'm fine with that. Yep. A further discussion? Can we put a timeline on it, Mike?
It's tough right now because we're behind on mowing. We have people out. But, you know, give me a timeline if you want, and we'll get her done.
Three weeks?
Sure.
Okay, that's fine with me. I understand that, you know.
Just wanted you to understand the consequences, you know. But we'll get her done.
Ben?
So we're talking about replacing that corner of the roof, and is that, the cost, is that also including the replacement of the wood if necessary?
I'm sure we have some wood around. If we need to get some wood in there to make sure it's secure, we'll do that. Get that underneath there or something. So that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Okay, you know, and John makes a good point. We don't know what's rotted up there.
Sure. I'm just trying to look ahead to see if there was actually, if there's something without seeing it first, that we can kind of plan ahead.
Yeah. We got wood there.
Really long screws.
John?
Really long screw.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be a restoration job.
We just want to cover.
Yes, we just need to cover it up right now. Shut the water, get it taken care of.
Got it.
Yep, thank you.
No duct tape.
Get some flex seal in.
Is there any further discussion?
I think we could all pull in some duct tape.
All right, the, the motion is to repair the Hospory Stable Roof with Department of Public Works not to exceed $100 in materials? All those in favor, say aye.
Less, less labor, they said.
Right.
Yeah, just, just adding.
But $100 in materials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Next item is property maintenance issues. Again, I'll start with John.
I'm going to go right to LUD on this. It's just, I've been getting a lot of complaints from people, parked cars in the yards, parked cars behind buildings. Again, it goes to Police Department. They do one part of it. I just found out today that DPW does the grass ordinance, not the code enforcer. Talking with the code enforcer a little bit, not much, but she's also looking for ideas on how we can get, implement more things. I mean, I don't know what the procedure is. I don't even know what the fines are for people that have junk in their front yards or cars behind, things like that. So.
Thank you. The chief did a wonderful job of kind of laying out current flow chart for the council, which is, we've got a lot of new council people, so that's important in and of itself. So I thank Bill for that. Bill and I visited earlier today and talked about the reality of the situation. I think as to junk vehicles, fairly effective mechanism, I think the department follows up very well on those kind of complaints, if we receive them, or if they view vehicles that have been abandoned or appeared junked. They're given the opportunity to make sure they're licensed and they're runnable. And if they are, then the citation is not issued. If they are not, a citation is issued, and I believe Bill are given 30 days to remove. Failing to do so, there oftentimes, we have fined people and then bring them to court. In the alternative, I think we actually have towed vehicles, correct, Bill? So in that respect, I think we do fairly well at abandoned vehicles. But clearly, if the community reports a complaint, the Police Department has responded to those pretty effectively. As to the grass, I think Mike can talk about how busy he is with grass and the door hanger process and the rest. And obviously, you know, maybe because of the circumstances with COVID and other reasons, it's been very, very busy. And with it raining and grass growing, I'm sure Mike can tell us, there's lots and lots of work to be done in that respect. But for the most part, I think that the DPW and the Police Department have worked through those issues. Where it gets a little trickier is where we have the issues of junk in the yards, junk in the back, junk around the house. That clearly crosses the line of decent homeownership. And the city in the history has been pretty careful not to get overly aggressive. And, and I'm sure those that have been around understand that, you're going to get your properties that are, they just continually ignore you. We have obviously out throughout the years, fined people. We have brought them to court repeatedly. One thing that happened that I think will help us, and I think we talked about that when we switched to municipal court. when we switched to municipal court, is municipal court. So the idea that we can become more aggressive in that arena, that's something that Bill and I talked about, and perhaps investing in the process, and I'll let Bill speak to that. We have a code enforcement officer that's also the building inspector. And if you go back years past, we've had various people in various positions of code enforcement slash building inspector services. And trying to use both of those hats is difficult, I think, for the building inspector, and I think she would be honest to tell you that. She tries to go around and look at properties and write letters and, and again, try to get people's attention, and then she brings it to Bill's attention or my attention, and then we get into a citation process. I think the word that Bill and I came up with today was streamlining. Certainly something that the administration can look at now that you brought this issue forward, but I'll let Bill speak more specifically to that because he may have the resources or ask for the funds necessary to become more intentional about enforcing junk, dilapidated houses, problems associated with keeping garbage and refuge around properties.
So specifically, I'll talk, and Ludd did a very good job of laying out our conversation today and in the past at reference to these issues. You are correct, there are different entities within the city that are handling different things, and I kind of laid that out in the explanation that I provided with you. The police department generally handles any vehicle type complaints because we have access to the DOT records, which are pretty restrictive as far as access. So, you know, DPW worker cannot come in and ask, can you run this plate for me and us just provide that information to them? Or code enforcement, we can't do that under strict guidelines by the DOT and our system. So we handle, and that's kind of what leads into the breaking of different entities handling things. So because of the vehicle issues, we handle generally those vehicles. Some of the things that we run into when we start talking about vehicle complaints is there's different ordinances that apply to those things. So if you have a vehicle on a private property, that requires a 30-day notice, okay? So a lot of times what we get frustrations from, from citizens is that they call us, they file a complaint, we go out there, we, if the vehicle meets the criteria set in the ordinance, we then deliver a 30-day notice that that has to be corrected. Well, maybe the citizen sees that and then calls back or gets frustrated because now it's three weeks later and nothing's happened, while we still are not within that, or we're still within that 30 days. So that kind of leads sometimes some frustrations. If a vehicle's on the street and it's dismantled or junked or has, is inoperable, that's a 24-hour notice. We also have things in our ordinances about storing vehicles for more than seven days on a street. So if you park a vehicle on the street, it can't be placed there for more than seven days. So it kind of depends on what the issue is and how we address that. We also have things concerning recreational vehicles. So if you have a boat or a trailer and it's not attached to a vehicle and it's left on the street, we have to address those separately, things like that. In the past, last summer, we had a community service officer that really tackled the lawn issue. Because of the whole COVID issues going on and the processes within our department, we're not filling that position this year. So DPW has then done the majority of the notices when it comes to lawns. So if we get a complaint at the police department, we provide that complaint to the DPW, they go out, they make the notice, it's a five-day notice. After five days, if the property is not corrected and it's not taken care of, they then go in and mow the property and there's, that ordinance is set up, and that's what we went through last year when we had the discussions about the tall grass and that sort of thing. As Ludd explained, the issues with the junk then falls to code enforcement or conditions of property. Those are things that code enforcement and building inspector handles. What we're seeing in, in our discussions, what we're seeing is that if we want to address this, we want to get more aggressive with it, you know, we're, we're, right now, we're devoting time and resources to that, but there's, there is a need based on the conditions that we're seeing that we would probably suggest that come budget time, we may be requesting additional funds for either position or some type of change there. It's going to require some, understand, it's going to require some city finances to be addressed in that to, to increase that enforcement. And quite frankly, I know that their department right now is overwhelmed with, with the grass stuff. They're devoting hours a day. I think one day this week, he probably issued four.
Monday, I issued four. Today, I issued another one. And some, and some other days, I spent three quarters of the day doing it.
So...
Along with DPW secretary, so.
So I think there's an opportunity there for that to happen, but with the understanding that if we're going to go that route, we need to understand that it's going to, it's going to require us to either provide a position or to, whether part-time, whatever, to, to make that happen. Additionally, the consideration may be to then, if we do that, instead of all three of the departments handling different things, that would allow us to get one person to do that, to engage in all of those things. What we tend to see, and I've had this discussion with Mike, is that people tend to react differently when they receive a letter or notice from the police department versus a letter or notice from the building inspector.
Or Mike.
Or, or Mike. So there's times where maybe DPW hasn't gotten compliance, they've asked us to follow up, we then get compliance. And, and by far, most of the people in the community, I would say 90% are compliant, and once we explain the issue, we don't have a problem and we get it taken care of. It may take some time because there's lots of different things that may happen there, but generally we get compliance, and that's really what we want. We don't want to have to issue citations. We don't want their money. We just want the problem taken care of and we want the issue addressed. So certainly the, the way that it's laid out now is, and you've got an explanation about that, it's working. However, we do think that there's some improvement that can be made. I think it would be imperative for the department heads that are specifically involved in this to sit down with the city administrator and with the city attorney and come up with a plan for us to move forward during the next budget cycle. But that's kind of where we're at now with what's happening, and just so that you understand kind of what the vision would be there as we move forward, because we understand the frustrations, the calls that you're getting, we're getting those too. You know, we, we try to address some of them, and, you know, it's, it's amazes, you know, and we talked about, you know, the lawn issue last year. Often these cases that we're talking about are not the violation of the six-inch lawn. We're talking about lawns that are a foot and a half tall. And maybe it's vacant property owners or absentee property owners, and that's what we're dealing with, so. And some of them are repeat, repeat offenders that we have to address over and over. And now, because of the ordinance that you passed last year, we're now able to have some teeth in that for increasing those fines and increasing that as those violations repeat. Questions?
I have two questions for you. First one is, when you had the community service officer, is that position capable of doing all the code enforcement?
Well, typically that position is a young college person. There's a need, I think, for, there would be a lengthy training period involved in that. If we, typically our CSOs are here for about three months during the summer or four months. So a month of that time would be in training, getting that up to speed. And if we're serving 30-day notices on certain things, now we're already two months past that, so I'm not sure that that position would be capable of handling everything. We did, we did have them doing vehicle enforcements for us last year and grass enforcement.
My secondary question on that was, if at budget time, they're able to make a position that's year-round at that level, would that person be able to do the code enforcement plus what the summer duties were?
Yeah, I think so. If you made that a part, you know, and I don't know, we'll have to talk about specifics on it, but I would envision if, even if you had a part-time position that handled all three, they're going to be sufficiently busy.
And the best place to have them is in your department?
And, and yes, I, I believe that the best place for that would be in my department under my supervision to address those things, simply because of the questions that come up with the ordinances, the court process. In order for, let's say, the building inspector, the code enforcement now wants to issue a citation, she can't do that because of the court process. She has to come to us, we have to issue that citation anyway.
And that would be the same thing here, too?
Yeah, so...
I can issue everything, but then she goes to bill.
Yeah, and because of my relationship with the city attorney and working through those citations, it would probably be best if it fell under our, under my supervision, I would think, to consolidate that. But again, that's, there's lots of discussion, I think, that needs to happen between department heads on that. I don't want to commit to that until we, we know exactly what we're talking about, so...
Here we go, Ludd.
Jim?
To that, Bill mentioned a couple of times in passing there that the phone calls come to dispatch. A lot of, lot of phone calls because to Bill's point, he said before, one time, somebody's going to be there, somebody's going to pick up, versus Mike's only going to be there till noon one, maybe?
Go leave a message.
And the other thing that's important about that is that by calling us, and, and if Mike gets a call, he will call us as well, because with our commu, with our CAD system, our computer, computer-aided dispatch, it allows us to keep track of a record on that specific address for that property. So I can go in and see immediately, just by checking the address, if we've been there before. How many times have we been there? How many times have we issued citations to that? So those records are best kept probably within our CAD system, and that would be another reason for that.
Let me just dovetail again. I think Bill did a wonderful job of kind of laying out the thought process that we had in this area, and I can't agree more with the concept of a community service officer being kind of the head of this process, because otherwise you got everybody pointing the finger at somebody else. And if we can say, okay, we understand that there's a property that needs attention and we have a community service officer or whoever, whatever name we give it, they're going to be able to say to that property owner, we need this completed, or the next step is, we're going to have court intervention and it'll be coordinated. And the same with the grass, same with cars, same with everything.
And that position then allows to, to your point, they know who to call, okay? They know who that...
Yeah, exactly.
They know who that...
Yep.
But understand the budgetary thing and there's a cost to that.
Yep.
I, I just, I, I want to add that as a former school counselor, I have so much respect for your department. I saw day in and day out what you've done for the safety and well-being.
Thank you.
Your, your letter in the paper, it's just incredible what you do. And, and it, it really sort of saddens me that we have asked our police to spend so much time policing grass. I mean, we're talking about, you know, not having the community service officer, and I will say, since I started serving, I have had more people of any other issue, well, maybe lately now it was chickens, but before that, tell me about, you know, when they saw Appleton had no mow May. And I just had another, a couple of constituents say, well, what about through the end of June? And I said, well, unfortunately, if, even if we were to bring it up for discussion, it would be too late. So this summer, I do not believe it makes sense to even bring it up. But there are movements saying that letting lawns grow are good for pollinators. Our local library has started education programs, it'd be nice to support them. They had a specific pollinator program for the entire community. In fact, while I do have, in my own neighborhood, there is a, a location that is not taking care of their lawn because it's vacated, and that is frustrating. It doesn't look good, there are weeds there. But it's also true that, for example, the, that there are homeowners that really care about the environment, and they were, they were affected by this ordinance. I'll, I'll say the director of sustainability at Ripon College was, was one of those affected. And she did this for ethical reasons, to leave her lawn grow. And, and I'm not saying that that's by any means why she's now leaving town, but when I think about having a community that is welcoming, when I think about having a police force that is not overburdened, or the DPW that is spending three-fourths of their day on grass, there are places like Brandon that I've heard, I haven't seen it specifically, but that they can apply for a permit to have lawns that are longer, as long as there are not noxious weeds. So I guess my point is, before going into this, is that I wish that we could kind of break these issues up, because I think having junk in a yard is a very different issue than talking about a lawn growing. And I think that those might be separate issues, because if we're looking at having our community being welcoming, of course, somebody wants junk in their neighborhood, and, and we want to be able to do something about that. But I do think the lawn issue is a separate issue that is worth follow-up discussion, maybe not now. And then lastly, sorry to have so much time, but there were constituents of mine that said, sometimes they'd like to be able to negotiate with a neighbor. So if there are things like this, where maybe there's something on the road, a trailer or something like that, that instead of going directly to the police, is there kind of a mediator? And unfortunately, I don't know if we have that role. I tried Googling this, I've seen that some cities have what you call an, I believe it's called an ombudsman. I don't know too much about this position, but I do wonder if there is something like, maybe the community service officer, or maybe some type of mediator that could help neighbors work these things out to be considered.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly why I think we like the concept of community service officer. Even the title suggests, let's talk if there's discussion to be had. Now, I don't quite know where we're going with neighbors agreeing on things that may violate ordinances, but the idea that if it's a neighborhood problem, there'd be an opportunity to say, reach out and say, if you do this, I'll do that in the backyard or whatever, that may happen. But again, I think the concept of a community service officer might address some of your concerns as well, or at least could be part of the discussion.
And how would then one go about that discussion? Would we have to formally bring it up to talk about a position of community service officer, what that all entails?
Yeah.
Before budget?
I, I absolutely think it's, it, the time has come for that, and it, and from a historical perspective, those that have been around long enough know we've gone through building inspectors and code enforcement and different agencies and different persons and different personnel and part-time people. And it, it comes to the point where we need to get this streamlined, I think is the word that Bill and I agree.
Yeah, to answer that question, basically, how that process, I would envision would work, the department has to get together, while we're talking about budget, which is starting in August, determine what the need is there, what the financial need is, what the responsibilities for that position is. That would be an item that would be brought forward in the budget process. I just caution you a little bit about when we start talking about, well, we have these ordinances, but then we're going to make deals, we're not going to, you know, and I, and I get that, you know, we're not about going out and writing tickets for everything. But it puts us in a difficult position when, when we have an ordinance and somebody's in violation of that ordinance, somebody down the street or passing by calls in and expects us to make some action there pertaining to what that violation is, and now, you know, we're expected to take some action there, so, you know, certainly there's some, can be some discussions there. We went through the, the lawn thing last year, and I know specifically about that. I was getting phone calls from neighbors, aldermen were getting phone calls from neighbors, that's why, and I worked with them. I worked with them a long time on that issue without getting into, you know, I don't want to take up too much time, it's going to be a long meeting anyways, but, you know, certainly we can have that discussion.
All right.
I do have one quick question. As far as when a complaint is made, is there communication given to the complainant about the, you know, like in here it mentions that, you know, they don't realize that things are being taken care of because there's a time limit? Or, or, you know, a window? Is that communicated to the complainant?
We try to do that.
Okay.
Sometimes it's an anonymous complaint.
Okay.
You know, we try to communicate as much as we can.
Okay. Okay.
Good point. Probably need to...
Be better.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any new discussion on this point before we move on? Nope, very none. Moving on to the backyard chicken ordinance. Turn to Jolene. Want to start the discussion on this?
Sure, well, I welcome everyone to, to share what they've heard from, from the community, and I will just start off by saying, I, I am honored to be able to bring this up again. I know that in the past, the city of Ripon has, has talked about this. I think sort of some things in, in society have changed. I, a little about my background, is I grew up in 4H and FFA. My own high school raised poultry. I was able to take poultry to the, to the fair. I even participated in a program that I got to go to nationals for poultry judging. I did showmanship, I got to not only practice leadership, communication... I did showmanship. I got to, um, not only practice leadership, communication, but that was a very specific, you know, in looking at even, um, you know, how much you're going to feed poultry, how you take care of them. So that was at the academic level, but I think about the family level, the opportunities that families have to instill really good life skills that we could allow our families and our community by simply allowing them to have, uh, poultry with very specific guidelines that have been proposed, uh, that, that we received in our information. Obviously, we can make changes on that, but so there is, uh, I really want to bring it up because I've had many people say, I think it's time, also with the current pandemic, the issue of sustainability of, uh, being able to provide your own food has been more on people's minds. Uh, and, and so there's a variety of factors, and I know all of us were, were emailed, uh, some reasons too, that you really bring this as a, a really, I think, a viable thing. People talk about just even enjoying the companionship. I think some of the things people have concerns about when they think about having backyard chickens is they think of a barnyard, they think of a large flock, they think of roosters. I want to be clear that what we would do as a city council, we would have a common sense policy, right? Uh, when people have concerns about noise, we're saying that we're not allowing roosters. Roosters are the ones that typically make the loud noise. Uh, chickens, a, a flock of chickens, in fact, um, I would say that at their very loudest, laying hens might be at a decibel of sixty to seventy, seventy decibels. That by no means is, uh, it's, it's, that's the level of a normal human conversation. Uh, by no means even louder than a lawnmower, by any means. Uh, people have concerns about waste, and, uh, what I found was that, uh, six hens have about the same amount of waste as a forty-pound dog or, uh, a, a cat. It's even less than that. Furthermore, chicken manure, not to go specific, is unique in that forty percent of it is organic matter. Why is that important? Because it works well for fertilizer. Uh, people talk about a concern about having extra rodents in the area. Well, that is a simple solution by saying that additional food, uh, for, for the poultry must be stored in, um, containers, which I believe is in the ordinance, in a sealed container. Uh, I think that, you know, I, I will say that if I just were to look at who contacted me, my constituents who've talked to me, uh, I've had many people say, wow, we, we are so grateful this city is revisiting this. I've also had people say that they are thinking about even offering to build chicken coops, or they're thinking about a side business. We have, you know, I know that in the past, uh, the animal house in town, we have a local business that could, uh, benefit from extra revenue there, and there is somebody that grew up in Ripon who has a business that allows people to sort of try out having chickens, provides them expertise. She did say that she's willing to come to our council. She's been to many councils throughout the state and Illinois to, to, to talk with them. Uh, again, I know that she did email all of us uh, with a number of reasons why she believes it's very good. Uh, and, and again, also, let's, let's talk about how poultry, they do help. Right now, I've heard it's a big tick season in Wis-, in Wisconsin. They eat ticks. They eat mosquitoes. Uh, I think that the concerns people have might come with them not wanting, you know, a neighbor to have it up to their property. This is why we put, again, common sense regulations so that it has to be so far back. That's obviously up for discussion, that we will, as a council, decide. But it doesn't seem to me that there are any concerns that couldn't be overcome by, again, ordinances that many other cities have done. And at some point, we need to look ourselves in the mirror and say, when places all around us, Wapone, Princeton, Appleton, Nina, Oshkosh, Fond du Lac, Green Bay, Eau Claire, La Crosse, Madison, Milwaukee, Manitowoc, Shabooka, I mean, we can go on. All of these have ordinances, and, and we're going to, and we're going to not at some point. I also think that we're also talking about how welcoming of a city we are to having new individuals and families move in. So, uh, I'm so glad that we are bringing this up specifically because I've had many constituents say that they are interested. Uh, and then a side note, I did reach out to both the town of Ripon as well as Wapone, are, because they have passed it in the last year, from my understanding. The town of Ripon said they've had no complaints other than there was, um, someone that their chickens did get out, but it was easily, they, they got the chickens back in, so they didn't really consider that a complaint. And then, uh, the city of Wapone actually hasn't had anyone take out requests, even though they approved it. So there is that other side of, even if we are not concerned about, you know, people actually having chickens, I do think it makes a statement to other people moving in that, oh, well, this city has this if I wanted to move here. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll stop here and let others chime in.
Chime in. Um, I know all of us councilmen and women did receive an email from Ms. Peggy Adamsky, um, voicing her concerns about having a chicken, about having chickens in our backyard. I've been reading over your ordinances and whatnot, uh, and rule sets on, uh, the chicken limitations. I'm not opposed to people owning chickens in their backyard within reason. Um, I fully understand. I mean, I think what it was, Tyson came out and said, uh, how much of a shortage that they're going to have on their food itself, uh, as far as their meat output. Um, in, in this day and age, I mean, stuff's getting really expensive. I mean, a hundred dollars at the grocery store never goes, uh, as far as we, as far as we used to. So you kind of want it to go further. But there are just parts to this that I would kind of want to pick apart and just add a little bit to it, such as, you know, free-range chickens, you know, there's no rent, there's no free-range chickens. Well, what if they had a fence, private, privacy fence in their backyard where the chickens can't get out? It's their backyard, and as long as they're in, kept in there, I wouldn't see that as a problem. I did read in there about the permit renewal, uh, the permit would only be twenty-five dollars a one-time fee. I think that should be a permit for every year. We do have to license our animals that live in our, that dwell in our home, and this would be an animal that would dwell in our home. Um, and I think we, as a city, would like to keep up with, up to date on, uh, how many animals per household we have in the city. As far as the not slaughtering of the animals, uh, I myself am a deer hunter. I mean, I skin my own animals and, uh, I do my field dressing and whatnot, and I've done that at my own home, too. I think if you're clean and sanitary about it and you don't give your meat away to anybody, I don't think that hurts anybody, uh, especially if you're doing it for yourself and your family. But I think there, as far as the permits go as well, I think there should be, uh, language in there that states, are these going to be pets that produce for you eggs, or is this going to be a produce that you are going to slaughter? Or how many will you slaughter a year, or et cetera? But I also don't, I, I don't like the idea of having six hens in your backyard. I think maybe two to three, I think would be perfectly acceptable. And I think it's just a starter point. I mean, obviously, I think we could revisit it later in the, later on if we wanted to, you know, up the limit of how many chickens per household a person could own. But you're right, Joe, that Jolene, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot that can be learned from this and a lot that can be, um, brought to this. But I think it's a lot that, it's something new for the city of Ripon. And I think it's something that would be real interesting to bring forth, uh, and see how it works. But again, coming from the standpoint of this is financially would help alleviate some people, I think that would be great. So, like I said, I just got some concerns about some of the stuff, but that's more, we can add to it.
As, as a councilman returning from the last time that we brought this up years ago, um, I was one of the returning ones that voted for it because I grew up on a farm that understood what it was all about. So I think I've kind of been targeted by our citizens because of that. And, uh, I've had about a three to one no from the people in the community with a lot of various reasons for that. The egg situation that we had earlier during the pandemic and that people are thinking that, you know, well, we, we're going to get tons of eggs. A chicken doesn't lay an egg every day. Doesn't lay multiple eggs every day, um, you know? So that aspect is, is kind of a, as far as they're, they're not going to gain ahead on there. Um, if you're allowed six chickens, you know, you may get four to five eggs in a three to four-day period, you know? Down to Webster's and buy a dozen eggs for sixty-nine cents now? The dollar value isn't there. I agree with the educational aspect. I mean, it's great. That's what 4H was for and those type of things, and, uh, that, that is good. But, uh, from what I've received from our citizens, um, the majority are not in favor of it.
I will say, before I come to you, that the comments that I've received has been probably four to one in favor of. But the, the one person that's not in favor is a lot more vocal than the four that were in favor.
Well, I'm, I'm in the same boat as how people have contacted me unanimously and numerous. Texts, calls, emails, Saturday night, nine o'clock at night, phone call. Um, they, they don't want it in our community. They don't see a need for it. Our ordinances, if you look at Amro's ordinance and, and the ordinance that was developed some years ago, and the current proposed ordinance, there's no, there's two, there's six, there's four. That number needs to be, um, looked at. I, I would think abutting property owners signing off, much like you have to do with our ordinance, if you have a, a certain number of, of dogs, um, it has to be approved by your abutting, that, by your neighbors that abut every area of your, your, uh, property. It's something we, we highly need to consider in the ordinance. I, I agree with, with Ben about the, the annual permit fee not being perpetual. It is a yearly fee, um, as is a cat, a dog, any other pet. I do question, um, you know, the, the coops, um, do they need a building permit? And then do those coops need to be inspected? And who inspects them? Certainly don't want our police officer or DPW person doing that. And if we got to have our building inspector do it, that's off-contract at seventy-five bucks an hour. So we need to be very aware that fees and permits cover those costs associated with that because it has to be a neutral situation. If you choose to have foul chickens for hand-laying purposes, I don't think, y- y- you buy four chickens, you raise them, you slaughter them in your backyard. That's, that's not what a community is for. This is, I believe, for eggs and those type of things. Um, you know, where, where do the chicken parts go then? The entrails, everything like that? Sure, our garbage guys don't want to see that, all of those things. So this is going to require a lot of work, a lot of looking at things, and, um, there, there's got to be some clear, clear guidelines in looking at all the various ordinances.
To back up Al over there, um, I agree with you one hundred percent, I think, but I'm going to go further. I think that there needs to be a strict rule, set rule of guidelines. I've noticed here in your third penalty, there's nothing here in losing your ability to own a chicken in your backyard. If you are not upkeeping your animals and you're warned three times, I think three times is good as many, then you should not be able to own them. And I don't think that's a, uh, I don't think that's too much to ask for. Because we're trying to, as well as we have our city, we're also trying to keep it up and keep a certain level here. Uh, and that just means be respectful to our neighbors and, uh, be respectful to ourselves as people and to our animals.
Where did this ordinance to amend come from? Who drafted it with this language?
The nu-, the newest one?
This one in front of us.
Uh, that one I put together personally. Um, the language came from, I took, I spoke with several other communities that have had the ordinance for ranging from since two thousand ten through two thousand, I think seventeen, eighteen was the newest ones. And three of the four, or three of the six peop-, groups or communities in that group that I talked to that had the least number of complaints, the least number of violations, um, most successful ordinance, um, is where I got most of those points from. It's kind of a combination of several other communities.
This is different than the last one. We had seen that we had drafted it and worked on.
Yes, yes.
Two thousand thirteen?
And the points that are in the one that I, the points that are in the ones that I drafted are all pretty much universally in the one cities that said they had the most success with their ordinance.
I think to what Ben might have just said, in the original one, we had something where if you got to the third and fourth level of penalties, it was, you couldn't have them anymore.
I think that should be included.
I think the other one in the pack at the Amro one has all kinds of things that have been discussed. It probably has ninety percent of the restrictions you're looking for. Again, it's not the Bible, um, and certainly can be modified in any respect, but, uh, it was debated very heavily in that community, and they were very careful to put more detail into the process, and I think it's in there. I know that in talking to Lori, we looked at a Wapone permit that also has some very specific language that could be dovetailed with an ordinance to make clear to someone that they have to follow the directions. The Amro ordinance has the building inspector part for the coop, has to be inspected. The police chief has given authority in the Amro model to revoke for violation. So there's, there's lots of checks and balances in the Amro model. Again, if you're looking for that, and I appreciate the mayor's perspective, and he was looking to get it going in terms of discussion, um, but we did study it fairly extensively in Amro.
With Wapone, and I don't know if it's for you or for Jolene then, the Wapone has an ordinance, yet no one has one. In their ordinance, does it request neighborhood approval or within a hundred feet or?
I think it's neighborhood approval. I think Lori pointed out that that one did have. I think in that permit that we were looking at, we didn't study the ordinance, but.
Not sure.
I think it had neighbor approval a hundred percent. The Amro model has fifty percent. The mayors did not. I don't think it had any.
So there could be a reason and justification why they have an ordinance, yet no one can do it because the neighbors are saying no to it. Because a neighbor says no if they need a hundred percent approval, so it's not that, that nobody's doing it. They may not be able to get their neighbors with them. And I do have some concern over that, you know, that'd be a recommendation I have, but I have fear of retaliation to those neighbors. If you, if you make it a neighborhood thing, are they then, well, look at their lawn, now I'm going to call Mike. Oh, look, they got their car parked there too long. You know, it becomes the petty back and forth. So, you know, sometimes we see these ordinances and we think, let's try it because there's nothing bad with it. There is, and because of the rules and restrictions we'll have to put on it, there's unnecessary harm potentially to not only the person that wants to do it, but the other people around them that don't want to do it. So it's just, just something I've noticed over the years.
To that point, the communities that seem to have the most success with it are the, have surprisingly the most lenient ordinances.
When you say success, as in the most number of permits, where are you using the word success when it comes to having it?
Uh, I'm not sure the most number of permits, but the, well, they still have plenty of permits issued. There have been least number of complaints. Uh, I don't have counts of how many permits were issued, but they had little to no complaints from neighbors after.
Success isn't a number of permits. You're using success in the term of number of complaints to the code enforcement or police or whoever.
The lack of negatives.
Okay. I just want to know where you're looking at success. Thank you, Volte. Appreciate it.
I, I think it's an interesting point to bring up because at, on a surface level, having neighbors agree sounds like a great thing to implement, but to the very point that Mr. Rich just brought up, uh, there is an article, and, and maybe we invite someone from Appleton City Council to, to chime in on this, but they, uh, first had where you had to get permission from all of your neighbors. Then in one year, they had in their, um, I guess ordinance that they were going to revisit their, their, their poultry ordinance, and it was decided that they were going to get, not, no longer have the regulation to get neighbor approval for the very reason of why, why cause this, this neighbor contention when you don't need that for a cat or a dog? Um, there was not the complaints that they thought there would be regarding poultry. So because there wasn't the complaints, because it seemed not only like an extra hoop, but it was also giving neighbors seemingly more authority than what they actually really even had. So in fact, Appleton just voted to, to rescind that for the reasons we're talking about. Uh, I have not to the point of slaughtering. I understand why people might want to do that. I have never seen an ordinance that has allowed slaughtering. They might add, uh, that there shall be no slaughtering of chickens in the city except at a meat processing facility. Obviously, that would, that would, I could see that being something to add. Uh, there are, as, as much as, you know, typically hens do not lay egg, uh, once a day, they can lay one every twenty-six hours. In fact, if they are relaxed, healthy, uh, in a good environment. Of course, when they get older in the winter months, uh, they typically will slow down in laying, but there could be a significant amount of hens. I do think that, uh, it is, it does make sense to have more than two in the fact that we are in Wisconsin. We know our winters can get cold. Uh, when you have, uh, you know, let's say four, for example, or six, as is proposed, but at least four, uh, you have more of that body heat to help them. Now, a lot of, I did have a constituent have concerns about, well, what about winter? How will these chickens survive? And that where, that's where it is important that we say that they have to have a proper coop, that we. important, that we say that they have to have a proper coop, that we put an ordinance in place. We have the language, that, again, the coops are proper, and that the bedding is cleaned and changed, they have access to fresh water and food, and also that the breed is important for Wisconsin winter. So that is something that is a part of this. And I guess the other, the other thing I will say is, as much as I, obviously, I want to be the first one to tell my constituents, please, at any point, that something is open for discussion, let me know how you feel. But I do question the value of people saying, no, absolutely no chickens, when they don't even, we haven't even released what all of the stipulations are, because all of the complaints that I have not heard, but have only seen from the discussion, from the Ripon, you know, paper thread, or from WhatsApp Ripon Facebook page, have all been unfounded when you look at those are addressed or could be addressed in an ordinance. So, you know, just like when people, you know, we can look at the history of society, people can say they don't want something, but it doesn't mean that that's right ethically, or that's right, you know, based on, until you know the information that is there, then let's hear, let's hear what people, if they don't want that. But let's make sure first they understand what we are accounting for.
I think if we did add something to the permit of the nature of, with slaughtering, like how many chickens will you be keeping all year? How many will you be bringing to the slaughterhouse, you know, to prepare for you and your family and so forth? I think that should be something that should be added to the permit. This way, again, it's just so a way that the city can keep track of it. But I, I don't disagree with the housing in the wintertime either. I think that has to be, I think that has to be addressed and well-kept.
As a point of the slaughtering, most of the intention of these backyard chickens is not to be raising the chickens for meat. It is to be raising for the eggs or companionship or whatever it may be, but almost universally, people are against raising them for the meat in cities. It's really more for egg production, which is, kind of goes to the slaughtering, trying to discourage people raising for meat.
Along with mentioning producing eggs, people selling said eggs, would there be restrictions on that? Or is that something, if people were to sell?
That is definitely something for the council to decide. However, I've seen probably 60, 40, 60% prohibit selling, 40% allow it. And personally, I don't see benefit or negative to either approach. But I do know that raising your own chickens for the eggs is not done for economical purposes. It is not cheaper to raise your own, or develop, or raise chickens for your own eggs than it is to go to the grocery store and buy eggs. Even if you're buying the organic ones, it's still cheaper to go to the grocery store and buy the eggs. You may have a better quality, but it's not cheaper. Jim?
Another question for Jolene. The email we received from the, I don't remember her name.
Karen.
She was for hire, correct?
Yeah.
She's a consultant. She doesn't just come out of the goodness of her heart. She actually has a fee. You can hire her to come, correct?
So she would, she said that she would volunteer to come to talk to us if we wanted that, perhaps, you know, making sure that she's available. But this is somebody, and I didn't know her previously to this email, but her name is Karen. She grew up in Ripon, and she has started a business where she allows people, because she knows that taking on backyard poultry is a big responsibility. And as we are outlining, we require, as we should, lots of stipulations. And so she allows people for a fee, obviously, that they can sort of test it out. She provides the coop, she provides the hens. And so, and she also sort of mentors them, or you're right, consults.
I just want to make sure it wasn't, again, it's a business she's running. That's why she reached out to us, because, again, that's a business she's running for economic reasons too. I had a couple people also reach out to me. Not many have been in favor. I have had a couple, but not many. Most are, most are negative in their connotation to me. One fellow was adamant of the fact of, if they're gonna use the issue of sustainability because of eggs and the chickens, why can't I have a cow? Why can't I have a goat? Why can't I have a pig? Why can't I have all these other things that could still be penned and still be the same thing as a chicken? If you're gonna use the argument of sustainability because of a pandemic or because of COVID, whatever you want to call it, why can I not have these other livestock in town either? What's the difference for him? He doesn't want chickens. He'd rather have beef. So, and he was quite adamant about it. The other one I had was, somebody also reached out to me about the word backyard. And we've ran into this before with issues regarding storage of campers and things like that, where the term backyard, side yard, because remember, there are corner lots. So the backyard on a corner lot could be the front yard of somebody else's house, you know, straight across. So the term backyard would go off of whatever street you're on. You guys understand what I'm trying to say? Sorry, it's not coming on. But if you're on that corner lot, the backyard is right here, and you're gonna be looking right at it. So the idea of there'll be hidden all the backyards, that's not a true statement because of corner lots. But I'd also even look at something there where restricted the furthest corner lot away from sidewalks and roads or something like that, you know, just to try to keep that, you know, sightline away from others as well.
Are you suggesting a backyard, to have backyard defined as backyard, but have an exclusion for corner lots to say certain furthest from the street possible?
That was kind of the way he brought it up to me. Again, we ran into this, I know, with campers before, because they complained about a park camper being on a corner lot. They were not in violation of any ordinance because it was on their side lot. It wasn't on their front yard, it was on their side yard, but it's across the street.
Corner lots don't have a backyard.
Correct. So that was a fear that, you know, another individual came out to me, because they had a feeling that somebody on that corner across from them was going to have them, because of conversation, and then they'd be looking at it right there as they want to enjoy their front yard. So just something to think about, you know, kind of more seed for thought. I think to Al's point, a lot more thought and discussion, you know, we're not gonna move on this tonight, and I would hope and would recommend we don't. Again, reach out to more constituents, talk to more people, investigate the ordinances in other communities, you know, and figure out the right thing to do here going forward.
In talking with some of mine constituents where I live, a lot have said that they would be okay with it, surprisingly, but they have voiced their concerns about wanting people to keep them in their yards. So like a chain link fence in the backyard to keep them there. And that even, even, for some reason, let's just say they get out of their coop, because anything can happen, but you want to be able to have that secondary protection for them. And that would also preserve the neighbor's property as well, and at least reduce some concerns from the neighbors about it, so.
And to that, almost every single ordinance, however successful it was, they all have, must be in coop or in a enclosed chicken run. And majority of those say the chicken run must have a covering on it. A for the protection of the bird and to keep them from flying out.
And I'll say it to Mr. Wirth's point there on corner lots, when, and I understand what he's talking about, when the corner lot's backyard is realistically, it's two people's front yards. So at that corner lot, you would almost have to have a fence there, not just a coop, but you have to have them fenced in, so this way this neighbor and this neighbor are not affected if they don't want the chickens. Does that make sense?
Well, like I said, the chicken run would be the fenced area. Basically like a, like a super dog cage outside.
So because I'm newer here, I think there's been a lot of really good ideas that have been brought up, and a lot of really good suggestions for additions. Can you, can somebody explain to me, at what point do we go down sort of line by line, decide what to add? What are the next steps? And how do we take what people are sharing and add it to a new draft?
Howard?
Well, one thing to do is set up a subcommittee to look at this, come up with a platform that may be doable in the city, and then bring it back to council to present it. Is that something you might be interested in adding up?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to form a subcommittee? Or do we need a motion to form a subcommittee?
Yes, you would need a motion to form a subcommittee. You know, that's one suggestion that Howard's making. The bodies in control of this matter whether it moves forward in any direction, and creating a subcommittee is a direction.
Is it still up for, like, discussion right now?
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, is that the, you said that's only one option. The other option would be we go now and invite the community to talk, or we, or someone takes it upon themselves to draft a new one on their own? Is that sort of the other, what are other options that we can go with?
Yeah. And again, it just, it's process, and that's a great question. Obviously, we use a format of discussion to see whether or not there's a will of the body to continue to put resources into it. There's nothing to prevent you as a council representative, if it's not voted down by the body to move forward, to put in the work to say, I've taken the comments of my peers and created something that I think takes that into consideration. You can present that as an individual council representative, or you can form a subcommittee, or you can decide that you're not going to debate the issue of chickens in the city any longer. All those things are viable options. So there's no limiting factor in the format we have this evening. The idea that you would invite the public is a motion as well. Do we want public input into the question? You know, in talking to Alderman Wirth, you know, you can even go to referendum, whether you want chickens or not. I mean, there's so many options available to the body in reaction to the discussion of any item. Forget about chickens. I just want to kind of highlight for all the new council reps that you don't have to feel like your hands are tied, you didn't like the model of the mayor, you didn't like the model of the city of Amro, and you go, what do I do? You certainly can draft and say, I've redrafted, I'd like the county council to review this item, if the body allows that to be a further discussion, or puts it on the agenda for action. So it's within the body's purview.
If you are gonna bring ordinance or amendment or anything like that, please draft it by and say who you are.
Yeah.
And what, and the revision date, because that's important, because then
Very good point.
We'll talk about this the next meeting. Are we talking about this one, that one, the one from seven years ago? Which one are we talking about? So
Excellent.
Just one of those things where then we know where it came from, how it came from. If this is from Amro, okay, fine. Amro's ordinance, and it was passed on this date.
It wasn't passed.
Just that kind of information, so we know where and where we're at. But other things we could do, Jolene, too, is just direct staff to take that input, draft a new ordinance, taking the input they've heard tonight, and we've done that as well. I mean, we've done that over the years, too, is that staff hears what we're saying, makes certain amendments to the ordinance draft, if you will, and then we come back in another meeting for more discussion, and then we can go back and forth to those changes or anything else that's come up. We've done that as well.
And no knock on the mayor's draft, and you certainly can take that one, and I'm not trying to compete with one or the other. I think the comments that have been made this evening, at least 90% of it's in the Amro ordinance, in terms of coops, in terms of the runs, in terms of the numbers, in terms of the neighbor contact, the revocation by chief of police. So take a look, a hard look at Amro if you want to continue the discussion, if we end here as a discussion evening with the time that we have put into chicken ordinance, and then bring it back. You can simply bring it back at the next meeting or the following meeting or whatever, for further discussion. And if you want to bring a model, you bring a model.
To that, when we get to the point, if it gets to the point of an action item, I want to make sure that ordinance is as good and clean as possible, because that's what can be published and handed to the constituents, to your point earlier of they know what the ordinance is and the rules are. So then that can get more input, too. So the key is that we're not getting to that meeting going, okay, change this, change this, and then take this out of B, but then we'll approve it based on those changes. It gets messy that way, because then it looks like we're changing at the last minute. So trying to get that good, clean ordinance to start with. So it's not gonna be, I don't see the next meeting in June. There's gonna be some give and take, I think, on this over the next couple months.
I'm not, I'm no chicken expert. I don't do birds. So this is all new. You know, I didn't grow up on a farm or anything. Even with a predator-proof top on a coop and a run, would it still, the scent and everything of the chickens, is that going to be bringing more wildlife into the neighborhoods, like the foxes, you know, the foxman? But is that something, because that, you know, that can affect, you know, other things if you have animals that start lurking around or building dens? So I just don't know how attractive they are.
And that's why there's the importance of the sanitation to be specified in the ordinance.
I do have to second that concern, though. That will, regardless of how clean you are, for some reason, and wild animals especially, they just, they go where their food is. So, and that's a big concern. I mean, is this going to bring rats into the city? Is this going to bring the foxes? In some extreme cases, maybe even coyotes. Because when a hungry animal is hungry, they're gonna look wherever they can for food. So we just gotta take everything into consideration. I think that's my big request there.
And I'd like to make a suggestion that when you do take these things into consideration, call some of the communities that have had ordinance for more than a year or two, like the five, 10-year mark, to see how they've addressed those concerns. And I found that they were very happy to talk to you.
I can add just a little more about, you know, predators, in that, you know, chickens are no more attractive to wild predators as are wild birds, rabbits, squirrels, other items. And so, and also, I think Ripon is well situated in that we have, we have wildlife areas, woods, places like that, where I think you do have a concern if we were a sprawling city and suddenly wild animals were being pushed out of their natural habitat, that is a concern. And I'm not saying it's not a concern, I'm just, I just don't know if it rises to the, to the level that we're fearing.
The reason I bring it up is we gotta do our due diligence to make sure that we're well-equipped and well-knowledgeable in this, in this vice itself, and that we are ensuring the people that, with everything we're putting in the language, that they can read it plain as day, understand it, and not have any concerns of that matter. Especially when, if you really want to guide them to information like you have with us tonight, that's great information for us to know, but not everybody knows that. And I think that would be a big thing for people in the city to know. This way, it would lessen their concerns and maybe even heighten their applause for it, you know? I think they would like it, so.
At this point, I know it was suggested that perhaps I form a subcommittee. I still like the idea of everyone feeling that they're a part of this. I know that it sounds like, you know, constituents have been talking to us. I do, I fear that if I were to develop a subcommittee, that it would mean people would just be directing their concerns and ideas to me. So I do like the idea. I mean, obviously, the mayor, you drafted this version, and I think, obviously, you know, to have, you know, your insight in this would be great, too. So I do like the idea of us inviting more public comment, inviting more ideas, perhaps inviting another draft for further discussion. As much as I'd love to be able to, this summer, to see people and families be able to have hens, it does seem like this summer might, you know, might not happen. It seems like it might be a little bit longer. So I guess it means at some point we make a motion here, right, for the next step?
Yes. That's all we need. Or move on. I mean, you certainly can, that doesn't close the debate or the discussion, but given the various opinions, let's make a motion as to how you want to respond next to this discussion item.
Can I ask one more question? Would this limit it to chickens, or would you be able to have mallard, like ducks?
Almost universally, it would. Every town has limited to chickens.
Only asking.
It is up to the council.
It certainly is, but almost universally, for any ordinance I've ever seen, it does limit it to female chickens.
It's the Amro, the Amro ordinance does a great job of outlining to the genus and species.
Right, exactly what I'm saying. DNA.
All.
DNA.
So you want a motion to bring this at a further council meeting for more discussion?
You choose, or form a subcommittee to study it further. I don't.
I'll just make a motion that we bring it at a future meeting for more discussion.
Can I? Any discussion on the motion to postpone this?
Any discussion on the motion to postpone this to a future meeting?
Does this also mean that more drafts will be, I mean, will have?
Somebody wants to form a draft and submit it, so be it. They want to take the changes we made to this. If the mayor chooses to hear what he, we said and adjust his draft?
I think between the two documents you have in front of you, and I would encourage you maybe to look at Walpines, too, and the permit. I, I know the permit was fairly detailed. I think you got everything you need if you want to try to meld and mold and, and create your own version of it. Hearing the comments, I'm just reading the, reading the room, if you will. So I think you've got the, the goods in front of you.
The last ordinance draft we had actually had our specific ordinance numbers and everything.
Yeah, and I think you can look at that one as well. Laurie will get that out to you.
And also, I took those ordinance numbers and put it on the top of my draft.
Very good. So, yeah, maybe you.
If he's doing it, that helps.
Laurie, you can send out email to the last draft we had.
You did already?
Oh, you did already? Okay, you already got it. Okay, so you've got that as well. So you've got a lot of ammunition to formulate, I think. So if we, the motion on the floor is to set another time for discussion. Do you want to put a date?
Well, just, we'll talk about it sometime.
Future date. All right, that's the motion.
All right, so the motion is to postpone this discussion to a future meeting? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor to postpone?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to the next item, and hopefully we can make the rest of this pretty quick. The status of Horner Park. John Split had a question there.
Yeah, I just wanted to check on the Horner Park Tiger Street Bridge. If we're going to go with that? If Mike contacted Condon Company? If we can block off their access? If we're going to remove the concrete barriers? Where it sits right now?
Back in February, Dave from MSA was here and we instructed him to turn around and meet me down there when the snow cleared to look it over, get some ideas and that. Have not heard from Dave at all, so. I guess I'll give him a call again and rattle his cage on that.
We, we have reached out to Condon's and there appears to be a boundary dispute. So to move forward, I think.
It appears to what, be what?
A boundary dispute. So I, I think the next step would be a survey. But that is costly.
Provided the two drawings for you. And then I reached out to Condon's and there's not a certified survey map on that. Somebody would have to pay for that to be surveyed so we know where we're at. And then talking with Howard, we wanted to maybe not close that out, that section off.
Want to be a good neighbor.
As a good neighbor. And then we would need funding for whatever the cost is for the stones or whatever we decide to do on that. That, that's where I believe that it was left.
As a solution for the Condon property line issue, can you just leave that half of the street past, or it'd be the south side?
There were two drawings, one left it there.
Yeah.
And one closed it off.
I mean, the street is the city's. We can do with the street as we, as we wish, long as we do not block a exit for them. And if any of you have walked over there, there's plenty of room to turn around and, on that damn side to do, as we said, put two parking spots with a center section going to the bridge. It may be a little closer to the bridge than what we originally wanted. But like we said, we, we want to be a good neighbor with Condon because they, they do utilize that for coming with their trucks and that there. The other side, which, you know, the north side is no problem at all. I've had several people who live in, in that area call and say, you know, it looks horrible with the retaining concrete pieces there. We need to move forward on this in one way or another. Does it have to be boulders brought in? No, you know, we could, we could put in block posts or something or road bumps that, you know, stop so people cannot go through there and leave it, you know, five foot wide for bicycles and pedestrians to walk through. Something to make it look better because the way it is right now, it, it's a shame to even call it a park area there with the bridge. Yes, we're not going to abandon the bridge because who knows? Someday there may be a grant out there. Somebody may leave us some money to redo that bridge, you know, so we still leave that option open. But we need to move forward on this and something.
In the proposals, are you looking at removing some of the asphalt road or?
I would say at this time, you know, ideally, yeah. If we want to make it into a permanent park, yes. But we don't want to do that because we're kind of leaving things up in the air in case we can find the funds to reopen that bridge. Because if, if we take asphalt out, you know, and, and leave a path like I originally had proposed, then we have additional costs later on to come back and redo that. So, you know, who knows? Maybe 10 years down the road, you know, the council at that time decides, you know what, we haven't used this road in 15 years. Let's just get rid of it and do whatever. Let them worry about it at that time. But, you know, for right now, if we do something to make it a pedestrian-friendly crossing, let's get something done.
Al?
Yeah, Holly, when, if you, if you do get Dave to go down there? Because when we were looking at this, you know, the Aiken Street thing, and that, that kind of spilled over into it. You know, and we did have some discussions with Condon's already, so kind of familiar with some of their concerns. And talk with Mr. Baumann, you know, maybe get him there that day or.
Exactly. A representative from.
Or Carla or somebody, so.
Because we do need to be good neighbor.
Absolutely. Absolutely, so. Okay?
Yeah.
Give me Holly.
I have no problems with taking it forward.
John?
In the meantime, when we're discussing that, there is a huge safety issue. There's a large pothole. I was there with Mr. Gallops. He looked at it. Somebody could easily step into it, fall into the creek.
On the bridge or the road?
On, well, it's right at the corner of the bridge and the road. And I know there's a lot of kids that go through there, so I think that needs to be filled in. And the gravel that was.
Collapsing that whole bridge.
Yeah.
So is the bridge even safe?
I don't know.
Well, according to the engineer we had, it was fine for pedestrian traffic, but not vehicular, like, you know.
So we need to get MSA out there pronto, is what I'm hearing, if there is further deterioration. Of the area around the bridge, if not the blacktop. Let's get that addressed and let's get that addressed immediately. So I think you're, Al, you and Holly, you're talking about getting MSA together and look at it and then get back to Mike and whatever we got to do temporarily to eliminate a safety hazard.
Might invite Mike?
Yeah, I think Mike needs to be there to get.
He could feel good.
Let's eliminate the safety hazard. Let's not leave open something that has to be addressed. Whether that means backing up the barrier so nobody can pass through that area. We can't leave a, a safety hazard. I agree with Alderman.
The other problem is the retaining wall. The cap is gone. I know on the north side, and we're, we're going to have issues with ice. It, it's just going to keep breaking apart.
So we need a, we need an engineered solution.
Yeah, we need to get that fixed sooner.
We need that engineered solution.
We're going to be spending a lot of money.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we need a motion to bring in the engineer or is that already in the works?
Yeah, I think, I think we should move it forward with the Director of Public Works and Park and Rec meeting with MSA to get a plan back to the council. I think that what's needed to happen here.
When we did a bridge inspection for State Street, it was around $1,100 or $1,200.
To correct that?
Assess that State Street bridge.
Oh, so we haven't done a bridge inspection?
Not through MSA on that bridge.
Okay.
Just what our past.
I don't think you have an alternative. If now you're suggesting, and you're suggesting that there's collapse involved. Because if we're going to send people, bikes, whatever we're sending across it, we got to be able to say that integrity is going to hold bikes, pedestrians, and prevent people from encroaching into those areas that are unsafe. So if that's what it takes, I think we have to do it.
Just my concern, you said that there's a pothole in there that you could actually, into the creek?
No, it's on the road bed itself. Where the bridge and the blacktop meet. There's quite a big hole.
Potentially, it's not a pedestrian-safe walkway right now as they could possibly injure themselves by stepping into that.
Absolutely.
I think that's my concern right now.
Yeah, mine also. And so I think it's very clear. This needs to be a priority on this.
And figure out what we're going to do. One way or the other.
Right.
I'll look at that and see if I can safely put something in place there to.
Thank you.
Still keep it open.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
For now, and if you guys direct me to have an inspection on the bridge.
I think it makes sense. I don't think you can get around it if you're considering it.
Didn't we have an inspection on that and the Jackson Street Bridge when Travis was here at the same time? That's why we were told that.
And how many years ago was that?
Had to be about five years, somewhere around there. Six years.
And the bridge hasn't been maintained since then?
No, it's been blocked off on recommendation of the.
Right.
At that time for non-vehicular.
But there's been no, no maintenance work done on it since then?
No.
Okay. Al?
Before we authorize a bridge inspection on a pedestrian bicycle bridge, let's get Dave in there and let's look at it and those type of things. And then we can ask the, the professionals, do you think we need a bridge inspection for pedestrian and foot traffic on this property and those type of things? I get about the pothole and all of that. Mike will take care of that. But before we authorize a bridge inspection, you know, that can cost quite a bit of dollars.
Yeah, no, and again, the number that was thrown out was 1,100. But I agree.
I'm meeting with my MSA consultant tomorrow. We can go over there. We can have that discussion now.
Perfect.
Call me and come back.
That'd be great.
Perfect. Thank you.
You know, we leapfrog.
Yeah, I agree.
To that point, I was going to reference the prior inspection. Laurie can get that information to Mike as well for that conversation because their findings then had life expectancy, it was like 25, 35 years or something, wasn't it, the way it was doing nothing?
Right.
Memory serves me, I apologize, I may be wrong. But there was, there was a life expectancy based on doing nothing. A life expectancy as if we replaced it based on two different types. So there was a lot of information then that we had. So if something's changed since then with the deterioration, then I think to Al's point, get MSA there, figure out what they're going to say we have to do or should do as far as public safety.
I'm satisfied with that approach.
And if we're going to worry about potholes, there's a lot more around this town. All due respect. There's a lot of sinkholes. So please, let's, if we're going to be mindful of that, let's look other places than maybe right down the street from our properties. Do you know which ones I'm talking about?
But do we need a motion to that effect?
Yes, let's make a motion to the effect that they move forward, Director of Public Works, MSA, and the Park and Rec meet as soon as possible to assess the situation and bring it back to the committee council.
Jim, would you like to make that motion? Or someone?
I'll make, I'll make it.
Okay.
Keep it moving.
Moved by Howard and seconded by David. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And Laurie, would you send that information from the previous to the council that, you know, because obviously a lot of them weren't part of us. Could you send that information to everybody else as well from that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Next item is skateboard park repairs. John Split?
I got a call from Trevin Schultz, a nice young man that uses the park a lot. And he pointed out a few of the defects at the park on the ramps. And I took pictures of it. You have them in the packet. You, you know, all I'm asking or pointing it out is that it probably should be repaired. It's not safe, again, for people to use.
Mike, were you able to find any information on that?
I looked at it and then I talked to, I think we had a meeting today with my supervisor and Tim Furch and Lisa. And he thought, I don't know if this is true or not, is whoever installed that skateboard portion was going to maintain it also.
Howard? Yeah, there was about 15 years ago. We had a group of young men come and ask for a skateboard facility. At that time, we had put, I believe it was $10,000 aside to purchase equipment. This was the basics of what we were going to do. If they wanted more, they agreed to fundraise additional, which never came through. So this is what we did. They had a group of skaters that were going to maintain it and let us know when things, they needed help with something that we could help them along with. This is the first time anybody has addressed anything. And yes, it, that's hardboard material, basically, is what it is. And it breaks down over years. A sheet of hardboard is about six, seven bucks for a four-by-eight sheet, somewhere around there. Not a lot, you know, cost to replace it. But the, the point is, is we either, either we do something to it or we remove them. You know, that's what it comes down to. But, I mean, they, to be honest, they could use a fresh coat of paint, the whole bit and that there. But, you know, if the young man that contacted you has individuals that are using it a lot, would like to turn around and help upkeep it. I mean, ownership is the best way to go. If you put sweat equity in anything, you take ownership, you tend to treat it much better and get on those that do not. You know, we could easily come up with some paint to paint it and that and, you know, get the hardboard replaced, you know, properly, but.
Hardboard, I reached out to the company, is actually called Skate Light Board. It's a little different than hardboard.
It's a little harder. It's a harder material.
It's a little harder, of course. It's a brand name with a dollar price on it.
Yep.
But it does last a little longer. I didn't get full pricing on it for it. I don't know if they make the template. Actually, that goes in there for that. But that's kind of what I know about it. Not to say you're wrong.
Most, most of the skate parks that I've been around in other cities and that is, they're not like this at all. They're concrete, they're metal tubing, you know, done with a lot more money.
The funding that we use for the parks comes from the pavilion reservations. And we virtually have very minimal reservations. So we have very minimal funding for the parks. Like about $500 is about all we got in this year compared to $5,000 or $6,000 last year. So those reservations are significantly down due to the COVID-19. And so our funding is being retracted.
Well, Mike, if you would check with the company what the cost for replacing those few boards are, get that information back to me. Send it to Park and Rec and take it from there.
Jim?
If you would contact the, the young men that have contacted you, pass my number on to them. I'd like to invite them to a Park and Rec meeting and get a little, you know, input from them instead of just us saying, this is what we're going to do and, and go from there. Been years since I've been on a skateboard and I don't plan on getting on another one. So I'd rather talk to somebody that is out there doing it.
Jim?
That was going to be my question, Howard, is did we skip a step here? Again, bringing this right to us versus Park and Rec. We have a committee with Park and Rec that should be addressing these kinds of issues and then making recommendations to us. So I'm questioning if we skipped a step bringing this directly to us. But otherwise, I'd have no problem with making a motion to direct this to Park and Rec to come back with future.
Take it from there.
Recommendation?[1750.86]
Tom?
So Jim's question, I would.
Motion on the floor?
Pardon?
I have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is to send it to Park and Rec.
You.
Now discussion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, well, I was told that the reason he went to Department of Public Works, I don't know if he called. Okay. And apparently he was told that he needed to contact a city council person to get it onto an agenda. That's why it was brought to my attention and then put on the agenda.
He contacted me about adding equipment and fundraising for the park, nothing to do with repairs.
I, I understood it as.
So those decisions are out of my hand. As far as repairs, they are.
Funding in.
In my hand, yes. But fundraising and bringing more equipment in, that's why I asked him to go to council member and discuss it with you guys to get it on an agenda for discussion.
I just don't wanna step on toes again.
Yeah, no. I agree.
I respect all the work you guys do, so that's why I just wanna make sure that it's the right place and we get the right information when we need it.
So the motion is to send this to Park and Rec Committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor to send this to Parks and Rec Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Heard to Parks and Rec. Last item is employee wage and benefits discussion. I imagine it's gonna be similar to the last meeting, but John, what's your concern?
I'll, I'll make it as quick as I can. I just need to start off by saying I have no personal problem with any city employee. In fact, four of the DPW workers who were either retired, quit, or were fired are personal friends of mine. Two of them right now are personal friends and one is actually a relative of mine. So bringing this up monthly or two months in a row, whatever, it's, it's hard for me to do it. I know it's a very touchy subject. So with that said, for the past two budgets, I've been trying to have a conversation about the health, healthcare issues, but have been shot down on many occasions. I feel it's very important to discuss this now. We're about six or seven meetings from budget time and see what we can do about it. This cost is only gonna increase every year like it did last year. And we seem to always put it off at the end. It comes to budget time, we pass it, and we just kinda kick the can down the road without ever asking questions. A few of the questions I have are, could we increase the employee contributions? Can we give incentives to employees to use a spouse's insurance? Can we not allow the spouse to get on our insurance if they work for a company that offers insurance? Can we raise the deductible? Can we not pay the employees deductible? Will any of these ideas ever lower the cost? I've tried to get answer to these questions like these, but always get answers back like, we will lose our good employees. Or this is the way we have always done it. Anticape, you know, they're just antiquated answers and a system that is broken. So I know this is a touchy benefit to talk about, but the increase every year is not gonna go away. And I believe we need to look at this right now. So I have a couple of questions, quick questions, about the health reimbursement account. Who puts the money into the account?
It's, there is no money that goes into an account. It's a reimbursement.
So the money comes from where then?
The city.
The city. Okay, so it's actually city money. Okay.
Well, actually, it goes to EBC. EBC administers the HRA.
Okay, so is there, is there money in an account right now? Or what, so?
We get a bill from EBC.
Right, so, but you have to draw that money from somewhere?
It comes from the health insurance budget.
Budget, okay, so you budget. How much do you budget every year for that?
Uh, last year we budgeted a three percent increase.
So you have like dollar amount on that?
Not off the top of my head.
So that's for the, and you don't know how much you paid out then, you're saying last year?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, I'll just, okay, that's good. I should've called you, so you would've had the answer. I wanted to, but I didn't. Okay, that, that's it, and I'll put it back on the agenda for next month and then we can get those questions answered.
With that, are you gonna discuss wages?
Wages?
Yes.
We can, if you want.
Sure.
Next month or?
I would even not talk about wages. You, you wanna talk about the one portion of the entire compensation package? For, for over a year, you refuse to acknowledge that there's a compensation package for an employee and you only go after the health insurance, even though we are the lowest paid police chief, city administrator with our, with our corresponding neighbors. So I, I just don't understand why we won't look at that, but you'll look at the health insurance. So if we're gonna talk about this, look at the compensation package in its entirety, please.
And I do and I will. The reason I don't believe the wage survey was done correctly. I'd like to find out if the wage survey was done years of service compared to years of service in Ripon. And an example would be, um, maybe there's four DPW workers in Berlin that have twenty-five years of service and they're making twenty-six dollars an hour. Maybe there's four DPW workers in Ripon, two of them have twenty-five years of service making twenty-six dollars an hour, and maybe two are new hires making twenty dollars an hour. That takes our average down to twenty-three compared to the average of Berlin with twenty-six dollars per hour. So I don't know how the survey was done, if it was compared years of service. I, I understand our police chief is on the lower end, but was that, was his wage compared to somebody that had twenty-five years of service as a chief? I don't know, and I hope you follow me. I don't always explain myself correctly, but that's why I don't feel that that survey was done a hundred percent apples for apples. Maybe it was, Lori, I don't know.
I don't, we didn't go that detail.
Okay. So I think it's a true statement that maybe the, the wage survey was not done a hundred percent correctly.
Jim?
If I may, um, so being new to this committee, you know, it's, it's awesome. It's good to see everything that we're doing here. Mr. Wertz, I a hundred percent agree with you that we should be looking at people's wages. But on the point of kicking the can down the road, and don't take any offense to this, please, but when, when you look at the, the family mentality that we have in this city, or even not the family mentality, let's say it's just a husband and wife and they don't have any kids, well, that extra cost is added on to them. So to me, saying kicking the can down the road on that, that, that's, that's a fallacy. You know, i- if, like, I could've went under my wife's insurance, but her insurance, that would've been great, but I can't because that's, that's why she's on my insurance. So essentially, and I, I really want you to think about this, if you're asking for us to not be able to cover the spouse, if they can have their own insurance, that's adding additional costs to the families, which that's kind of a sacrifice right now that I think the employees are making to be able to cover their spouses and their families under our insurance with maybe they're not getting paid as much. But their families are still covered under one insurance plan, which in turn gives their household a little bit of extra cash flow, which maybe some people do need. I'm not gonna deny that maybe the insurance issue should be looked at. Maybe we need to get up to date with the rest of the surrounding cities that maybe they've made some changes. But I think we need to heavily look at it, and I think it needs to be discussed and rectified.
I have a question. As far as you budget for the three, four percent increase every year, is there then a, do you impose a three percent increase of, from what the employee is paying? Say they're, you know, they're paying a hundred dollars. Do you add three percent to that for a new year?
We have, we have a flat fee.
Okay.
So for, for, um, union employees, it's a hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
For non-union, it's eighty dollars.
Okay.
That was just difference in bargaining.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification in terms of placing things on the agenda. Clearly, we've got a new council and the idea that you're gonna bring things up and you want them placed on the agenda, you bring them forward. At some level, repeatedly putting things on the agenda needs to be acknowledged by the common council. The idea that you have an idea, you have a subject area you wanna bring forward, bring it forward, but the idea that you keep putting it back on needs to be ratified by the common council. So repeatedly saying we're gonna discuss it because you want more information about any topic, whether it's chicken or otherwise, it, it needs to be ratified by the common council. The agenda belongs to the common council. Now, historically, the mayor gets involved, the city administrator gets involved occasionally. They ask me if that's an issue that should be put on, should it be an open session, should it be a closed session? But it's your agenda. So the idea that we just routinely put something on every month needs to be your decision, not a particular council person decision. It's a body.
And also, we, we need to, we need to clearly look at managing our agenda. When you look at eight discussion items this evening and you have four heavy hitters, chickens? Okay, you've got chickens, you've got, um, the, the discussion regarding the liquor licenses, you've got the property maintenance issues and all of those things, not to mention, you know, we have to manage that. We have to have the time to properly vet and discuss and pay attention to what's going on. So, you know, it, it is the council's agenda. I want this on the agenda. Well, maybe next time, but we've gotta, we've gotta work on managing our agendas also because it can get out of hand.
Jim?
And another point with the discussion items, if you were gonna bring something forward, I'd like more detail of what we're gonna talk about. You know, a detailed list of like those questions and things like that. You, you know me, I, I like discussion too. But a detail of what we're actually gonna talk about, cause I can't research or do anything without knowing what we're even gonna talk about. I mean, employee wage and benefits, I was hoping we were gonna talk about the wages, but we didn't. So I can't answer the five questions you had. Lori couldn't answer those because we, I don't have them. So we don't get anywhere by not knowing what we're not gonna talk about. You can't research anything. We can't come with valid arguments, so it's gonna be another meeting anyway because we don't have the answers, because we never do the questions, or we never knew the detail of what we're gonna talk about. So for me, when I look at agenda, and you guys have heard me say it before, I wanna know what I'm gonna talk about. I wanna research it. I wanna talk to constituents. I wanna know what's going on in other communities. That, that's why, that's why we're here. We're not helping each other by not getting the right information out the first time. We have to do it a second time and a third time, and to Al's point, now it's gonna be on another agenda item with three, four talking points because we couldn't, we didn't have the information in front of us because we didn't know what we were gonna talk about. So I have no problem with putting some on here, but it's just, please help me out so I can, you know, bring the drafts, send the drafts out with the agenda, you know, those things.
Really?
That make sense?
I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, and as a new council member, I would appreciate knowing, and I don't know if it, probably it doesn't mean that it's during a council meeting, but I don't know when it would be to know, for example, okay, talking about health insurance, what committee could that fall under? Um, perhaps, you know, the backyard chicken, maybe that should've gone to a committee first. I don't know. How do we know where maybe appropriately these things can fall in? And then second of all, I also still feel a little bit unclear as to the walking quorum rule, so um, I would've loved to send out to everyone, you know, here are some myths, for example, related to poultry, or would've loved to hear from Mr. Split about the questions here. Do we have to worry about emailing the entire council of things that are not open to the public?
Yes.
And so, and so how do we get this information out to be more prepared?
One-on-one contact. You can reach out to one of your colleagues and say, I have a question. Do you have an answer? You do group mailings, you're running a follow of the open meetings law. So you can do your fact-finding, but you do it one at a time and you can't do it to build a consensus. That's a rolling quorum. So the concept is you just simply gain the information, and that's why you have a city administrator. Okay? City administrator's job is to organize and be prepared to look at the agenda and give you as much information as you can, and that's why I raised the issue of just putting things on agendas after agenda because there is something that somebody wants to talk about. And so I, that's the only reason I do that. It belongs to the body, not to an individual, okay? So this rolling quorum thing is tricky. It's hard, and you're right, but you can't do it outside of an open meeting. You're a public official. You can't go, eh, 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 we'll talk about this. That's illegal. So yes, it's important, so it is hard. It is hard, and that's why it needs to be framed, and that's why you have a mayor and a city administrator to help frame the agenda. And I'm not pointing at John at all here. John had a right to put this on here, and he did. But at some level, I think Jim's point is well-taken. We got to know exactly what we're addressing in this meeting, and then Al's point's well-taken. How long do you stay with a certain topic and fully address it with all points considered? Again, administration, that's how you get all the issues out there. So if you have concerns on something that's gonna be on the agenda, say, can you give me more on this? And the city administrator will, and say, here's what I got. What else do you need? I'll bring it to the meeting. I'll send it. I'll make sure everybody gets it in a unified way without the vote takers doing it themselves. That's why you use the administration for getting that information out there. So like if you decide to draft a new ordinance, you give it to the city administrator. City administrator disseminates it. There's no, oh gee, I agree with Jo, Jolene on this, and you know, I'd like to talk to Al and Jim at the same time, and we'll, you can't do that. That's the point of using the city administrator.
So as a point of clarity, so if we're asking Mr. Split to say, you know, because maybe he has more questions than what we're just raised here.
City administrator.
That he should give it to the city administrator.
Absolutely.
And the city administrator will then provide to us.
Absolutely. That's your point, person. That's why you have one, chief executive officer. That's where everything should get funneled. And again, I'm not pointing at John, he, he asked Lori to put it on, but are we gonna put it on every week if there's nothing new to discuss? And are we talking wages? Are we talking benefits? Are we talking about other communities? Are we talking about the deductible? Are we talking about? Sit down with the city administrator, talk to the city administrator, and you may agree, yeah, let's get this out there. Let's get this information out there, because it's gonna make us better informed and make a better decision come budget time. But that's why you use the city administrator. Again, I'm not trying to be critical at all of anybody here. It's a learning curve. I, my door is open for anybody who wants to talk, uh, cause I've been doing this a while. It's just, the concept is that's why you pay her, and that's why you pay department heads. Got a question about police force, ask chief. Public works, you ask Mike. That's, that's how you do it. So you don't have to feel this urge that I've gotta get together with three of my peers and figure this out. You do that at the meeting. That's publicly noticed.
Jim?
Same thing, but we, there's times stuff happens on the agenda. We then research it. We find something. We wanna give it to everybody. You get it to Lori.
You get it to Lori, Lori gets it to everybody.
Sometimes the bid, like say John didn't get that bid from Thorpe until today. Get it to Lori. She'll have it disseminated on all of our desks or in our slots so that we have that information, so. You know, that, that kinda stuff happens quite often. John's done research on, with historical stuff for cost. Many times, he does the research, gets it, gets it to Lori, and then it comes out in our package. If that helps.
Any questions? I, I'm not trying to lecture people, but we ultimately have to make sure we control, and it belongs to you, again. The common council runs the city, but you hired a city administrator to do your work. And again, because of open meeting laws, you gotta make sure you're prepared when you come in, and I'm not being critical, just.
I had a question that for you later. I was gonna ask, but since you just brought it up, the meeting or the gathering that's potentially next, on the twentieth? Again, if all of us are there, that's a.
Gotta be noticed as a meeting, yeah.
It has to be noticed.
The one that we're invited to? Yep, you gotta let Lori know.
Lori would, let Lori know, or she'd send email, does anybody plan on attending? I'm gonna be out of the city. I won't even be in town, so I won't be there, but.
Right, whenever you have that concern that there's gonna be more than three of you, which is a negative quorum, you need to let the city administrator know. Good point, good.
Roadhouse and there's more than three upstairs.
You gotta leave.
Somebody's gotta go.
Every Sunday night.
Or somebody's gotta go upstairs.
Somebody's gotta go downstairs. Again, you can use common sense in this arena, but it's important. Our business belongs to the public.
Same with gatherings for Ripon Main Street, Chamber, all those kinds of things. We gotta be careful of that kinda situation.
All right, so back to this last point of employee wages and benefits, is there any further discussion for tonight?
Last thing I wanna say, Mr. Split, um, is there is a, there is a mindset where we pay for what we get. Last thing I want to say, Mr. Split, is there is a, there is a mindset where we pay for what we get with employees as far as when we work, when we pick a job that we chose, that we choose to do. I can use myself for an example. Let's say I have freighter hospital care offering, wanting my worker, you know, wanting me to work for them. Let's say they offer me 20 bucks an hour in their insurance, let's say it's 250 bucks every two weeks. And let's say Aurora offers to hire me and they're only going to give me 18 bucks an hour, but their insurance is 150 bucks a week. And I get to pay, now, there's a lot of variances that go in that. That's the only thing I request that we just talk about, you know, and, and keep in mind with that. That's it. Otherwise, I like discussing all this with everybody, I like keeping an open policy with the public. I think the public does deserve to know everything and anything that we discuss and anything we want to bring forward, so.
All right, moving on. Project updates and staff reports. Lori?
I have nothing.
Mike? Chief? All right. Mayor's communications, I don't have any appointments today. I just reiterate for everyone to be safe, be safe, stay healthy and be kind and respectful to others. I mean, all parts of that comment are very valid this week. Next item is agenda items for future council meetings. Does anyone have anything tonight? Not, we can get those to Lori. No, is there a motion? Yes.
As, as many of you may know, Ms. Rich is planning to retire next year. And so consequently, she was kind enough to put together a very detailed timeline of activities and events and things that must occur in the hiring process. And the time is upon us to begin. So I've already talked with the mayor. There probably, there probably are some decisions that we have to make moving forward in that process sooner than later. And I'll, I'll talk to you whether that's closed or open.
Okay, perfect.
But, so we need to make some decisions which will then dictate our activities going forward to attempt to try to replace very valued employees.
All right. Anyone else?
If it is unclosed, I'd recommend the new council members reach out to Lud, just because we haven't had a closed session yet.
Yep.
And the intricacies of what that means.
Tales. Again, it depends on the particulars. Position versus people.
Right. We'll discuss it.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Moved, seconded? Anyone second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.